Commission meeting for January 26, 2009. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comment on any item not listed on the agenda for this evening. And seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which is adoption of the planning commission minutes, excuse me, and we have none this evening, so we'll move forward right into our first hearing, which is CP 0805. This is a continuation from two weeks ago, concept master plan, detail master plan, subdivision, unstable slope, and water quality relay, resource overlay district. Since this is a continuation, I don't need to read the legal, but I think it'd be prudent that I do, so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to go through this. A staff report has been prepared for the application this evening has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staffs analyze the criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to know whether or not. There's usually a check. Well, we do have them. We'll show them to you. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before you speak. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public testimony, please begin all testimony by stating your name and address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, please identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon Revise Statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following: The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in civil circuit court. At this time, I'll ask if any commissioners have any ex parte contact, conflict of interest bias, or any other statement to declare.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any conflict of interest or bias, but I can declare an ex parte contact in that I was in attendance at the Urban Renewal Commission meeting on the 21st of January last week.
Okay.
So, that probably accounts for a number of the exhibits that we're looking at tonight, the presentation that Mr. Darrow and Mr. Tyler had made, as well as the public comments that I'd listened to.
And you feel...
Excuse me?
And how do you feel about that? Feel comfortable?
I'm comfortable with that. I'm happy to take any questions about it. The ex parte contact, it doesn't bias me or my decisions in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any questions from the audience? Commissioner Lozwa, you mentioned last meeting that you had some...
Yeah, and the potential bias. The architect of record is LRS Architects. The lead designer on it is Greg Mitchell, who is a friend of mine, and I indicated in our last, in our first, in our last meeting where I feel that I can render a, an impartial judgment on this regardless of my relationship with my friends. If there's anybody that has any questions or comments.
Do I have any questions, Commissioner Lozwa? All right, seeing none, Commissioner Dunn.
I also attended the urban renewal meeting of last Wednesday, I believe it was, and I appreciated the information. I see it's repeated what we have here for the most part, and I think I can make an impartial decision based on what the criteria we have with the planning commission.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, this evening's procedures will start with a staff report, and Tony, please introduce any new correspondence.
All right. So what we've provided for you tonight on the DIAS walkthrough, and these will be in the order that I described, Exhibit A to be entered, is the agenda and the staff report and the PowerPoint presentation that were presented at the Urban Renewal Commission last Wednesday. The attached Exhibit B is a letter from Mr. Edgar to the Urban Renewal Commission dated January 21, 2009 concerning the Cove, concerning financing and water quality and the costs associated with developing the Cove. Exhibit C is a prospective purchasers agreement. Ms. Kraschaw will be talking about this later, might reference it, and it includes a map of well sites on the site where testing has been done on this site in agreement with DEQ before the city purchased it. She'll be talking about that later in the presentation tonight. Exhibit D is a, the PowerPoint presentation from Mr. Tyler to the Urban Renewal Commission. Exhibit E is a letter dated January 26, 2009 from the Main Street Program in Oregon City indicating that they do support the project. Exhibit F is a memorandum from Mr. Patterson, the city manager, to the Urban Renewal Commission and the Planning Commission concerning the ability to maintain additional parkland and open space within Oregon City. One of the, this is one of the comments brought up at our last Planning Commission hearing in that the Cove parklands were anticipated in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We all understand the funding issues associated with it and the understaffing of our Parks Department, however, that does include additional, the goal of providing additional FTEs to maintain the current level of service standard on our parks maintenance, so that has been accounted for in plans that the city has been working on. Exhibit G is a memorandum dated March 6, 2006 to Steve Janik concerning the status of the waterfront master plan, which was adopted as an ancillary document to the city's comprehensive plan. I think it's important to remember that we do have a comprehensive plan designation on these sites, and we do have a zoning on the site, which is mixed use downtown, and that the applicant has proposed outright permitted uses on the site with their residential office, medical office, open space, parks, retail, restaurant uses. The Exhibit H, our, is a parking requirements for medical office buildings. This was provided by the applicant, and through my findings, they requested several adjustments, and one of those adjustments was to the parking standards for the medical office building. Our code currently applies, allows 3.33 parking spaces per thousand square feet. The applicant requested an adjustment to five. The narrative didn't address why the adjustment was necessary, and since I've written that staff report, the applicant has provided a memo that they will go over when they come up to speak, as well as this exhibit. What the finding of the study was that the 85th percentile for parking at medical office buildings, they looked at about 50, 50 office uses, medical office uses, and the 85th percentile in parking was 4.5 spaces per thousand square feet. Based on that, they've requested an adjustment for five per thousand. I'll leave it up to the discretion of the Planning Commission. I think that they do justify an increase in the amount of parking associated with that medical office building, just based on the intensive use of it. Can make an argument that our number is probably a little bit low in our code, so I will leave it up to the commission whether they think that the applicant has provided enough information through this study and their presentation that they'll give tonight, whether that should be raised to the four, four and a half as the 85th percentile this study finds, to five as requested by the applicant, or if it should remain at 3.33. We do support raising it, and like I said, I will leave it up to the commission whether they believe that it's four and a half or five. At our last, at our last hearing, there were, there were issues raised concerning the public parking for the park. The applicant had proposed 10 spaces. I did add a condition of approval that would raise it to 28 spaces, and what we did was work with our Parks Director, and what we've used at Wesleyland Park was five parking spaces per acre, and so we applied that standard in this situation. However, we didn't apply it to the, to all of the open spaces being proposed on this site, because a lot of it is natural vegetation that won't be used for active park area. So we focused on the North Park area and the acreage of that park to come up with the recommendation of 28 spaces to accommodate that park, that North Park use area that's proposed as part of the project. A question was raised concerning how they're calculating the minimum FAR for the project. The applicant's proposing to subdivide the property into six lots and five tracts. The tracts will be certain open space areas, park spaces and whatnot, so that leaves the six lots for development. On page 31 of the application, the applicant provided the proposed square footages per building on each lot, and then they also proposed that when each lot comes in for their detailed development plan, that they achieve at least a minimum, which would meet the FAR of the mixed use downtown. So they provided a proposed square footage of what they envisioned for the site, as well as a minimum FAR, a minimum building size that would need to be achieved on each one of those tax lots to make sure that the last one in doesn't get stuck with needing to build a six-story building to make up the FAR for the total of the project. So I think that might address that concern. And then there was also a request for the breakdown of parking stalls on the site, and that's can be found on page 14 of the staff report, where we broke down the minimum and maximum parking requirements per the code based on the square footage provided by the applicant. And if the applicant comes in with a smaller square footage, obviously the parking would come down representative to the square footage that's being proposed, but they have demonstrated that they can meet our minimum and maximum parking range on the site between a combination of at-grade and below-grade parking with each lot.
Yes, sir. Just, so, infrastructure as it relates to this is dealing with the larger number, though, right?
Correct, yes. Transportation, yes, it was all taken, the full build out of the site, that's correct. There was a question raised about medical buildings should be allowed in this area. As I stated earlier, the mixed use downtown specifically permits medical office buildings to be constructed in this, in this zone. How long is the planting responsibility for? Within the water quality resource area, we have a three-year obligation for the maintenance of those planted areas. More public parking needed. I've addressed that concerning the raising the parking standards for the park area. Get easements for pedestrian and bike access through the box culverts under I-205. We went out and found those box culverts. They're actually, if you're coming down Main Street and you, and you turn onto Agnes, those box culverts are, you know, about 75 yards from that intersection. They're not located on this site. This site doesn't have any frontage on those box culverts. It's certainly something the city should investigate, but I don't think it's something that we would be attaching as a condition of approval of this, of this, this project is they don't have any of the property under the control to get easements to those box culverts. It's owned by a different entity, and it's not part of this project's site. What happens to the metal structures in the Cove? The metal, the metal structures are proposed to be removed. If there were additional in-water work, that is regulated by the state, so for example, when the docks go in, or if additional nesting have, were proposed, snacks put in the water and whatnot, there would be consultation with the state to make that, to receive the appropriate permits to do that. We don't regulate at the city level the in-water work. We regulate from the water line and up. We maintain the vegetated corridor. And as part of this application in phases one and two, the applicant is proposing to stay above that, that high watermark, so they, as part of phase one, phase two, they don't need to get permits from the state to do any of their grading work. We will, we regulate all that. It's our riparian corridor. It falls under our Water Quality Resource Area Code. The applicant has submitted a water quality resource report. They also did an alternatives analysis, and they prepared a mitigation plan to replant that vegetated corridor up to our standards as defined by our code. There'll also be erosion control measures in to make sure that we do protect the water quality as the construction on the site does occur. There's a comment raised concerning the independent review of the floodplain. Our code, when it addresses our floodplain, it, what it talks about is requirement for a balanced cut and fill on the property, and the applicant is, has met that. They've proposed through their grading and reworking of the site to provide 900 cubic yards excess storage capacity than currently exists on the site today through their grading and earthwork movement. Our code also requires that you build habitable space one foot above the base flood elevation. And so there were some, there's been some changes to our flood code. What had happened was we use datum points from 1929. FEMA used those to identify the flood elevation in Oregon City. In 1988, they went through and updated those datum points based on better technology, and they were able to get more accurate elevations throughout all the areas that they, they review for flood management. So according to FEMA, even though the flood level stayed right here, the datum points changed. So the flood level went up three and a half feet, even though it stayed at the same location on the property, the elevations, by being updated, went up three and a half feet. And so FEMA released a new firm map, a new flood management map, and added, and identified the flood elevation in Oregon City at 48 feet. What our code did was said, we're going to look at not only FEMA's firm map, but also the inundation of the 1996 flood. And so that's why, while FEMA requires a 48-foot, our code is actually at 50.7 feet. And then the applicant is going one foot above that, so they're at 52-foot for their residential development where it's going to be proposed. So in essence, they're four feet above the FEMA-recognized map, and then they'll be a little over one foot above our 1996 inundation map. In terms of additional experts, our code is pretty clear on what the requirements are for development in that floodplain in terms of balanced cut and fill and elevations at which construction can occur. When those detailed development plans come in, they'll also be reviewed by our building inspector. There are several requirements concerning building construction, electrical, et cetera, et cetera, that need to be complied with when that development does occur. We believe that the applicant has addressed those criteria for the flood management overlay district, and we have recommended approval based on that section.
Can I ask you a question while you're there?
Yes.
You said base flood elevation.
Yes.
Is that, can you define that? Is that the 100-year flood? Is that the, what, how do you define that?
FEMA, FEMA maps are generated on the 100-year flood, that's correct, yes. As part of the approval criteria, the applicant has the ability to request adjustments to the, to the existing code that's in place. They did request nine adjustments to our code, and we've walked through those on page 21 of your staff report. And I had made the finding concerning the parking, which we've already discussed, so I will not go back into that one. But they've also requested adjustments to the building site, and what that is really, I mean, some of these, some of these are really tailored towards small site development or subdivisions, in which this master plan is really providing an overarching vision for this area. So we felt that these, these adjustments that they've requested are reasonable in the context of the project, the design of the, the quality of the buildings they're proposing, the location of them, the landscaping, the open space. When you take all those factors into consideration, their proposal meets and exceeds these requirements that they're requesting adjustments from. For example, the building site setbacks and building locations, that all buildings be located, you know, five feet from the front property line and that they face that street. Well, in this case, we've, we've located Agnes behind the building in order to enhance the amenity in front of it. So an adjustment like that, we felt was certainly warranted. Variation in massing not to exceed a one-to-three ratio height to width. And just based on needing to get, utilizing that ground floor for parking, or in some of the other instances where you just have no choice but to build those buildings higher to get out of that floodplain, that height, you know, gets countered in that height-to-width ratio, but based on, you know, the pedestrian connectivity and the access of the public to the property, we felt that in the design of the buildings they've proposed, it avoids the long blank blocks development with no pedestrian amenities at all, which was really the intent of trying to avoid that, that large blank wall on our public street. Through the designs they've submitted, we believe that, they've achieved our goal of providing a pedestrian-friendly environment with, with attractive buildings. The carpool and vanpool parking, they've requested a reduction from the 5%, just based on the uses of the site, the restaurant use, the office use. We'd be, we would have a lot of parking dedicated to vanpool, carpool. They are proposing to provide it, they're just asking for a reduction. The maximum building setbacks, I've...
Before you go, Tony, what, you said quite a reduction, it's from 5% down to 2. So 5% represents 25 parking spots, or what was, what was the total?
Um, 5%? 50 of 1,000 at full buildout, but then we would have to take out the residential, I could, I could get that number for you.
Does this include the medical office building?
Yes.
Seems to me there should be a lot more van parking in that area. We live near the Kaiser, I'm sorry, Kaiser, Alamo Falls area, and that is very heavily used. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Might be something to take a look at.
I will, as we're going through this, I'll work on that a little bit. The water quality resource area, we have a provision in there that doesn't allow paths to be more than 12 feet wide. The applicant's proposed a 20-foot wide esplanade to enhance the public access to that area, the ability for the public to use it, to really make it a community gathering space. They've also offset that with additional mitigation, so we believe they've met the intent of the water quality resource area. They've also requested adjustments to the parking lot landscaping, both the interior and exterior perimeter landscaping in our parking lots. We did find that the applicant should, for the, for the medical office building site, the mixed use building, and the park, most of the above, of the other above-ground parking spaces are relatively small. They're in small groupings, which is what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to avoid 50 parking spaces in a row without a tree or a break or an island or pedestrian connection. The parking along the front, the rear of the residential units are broken up into approximately nine. Our code requires every eight has a, has a planting strip. They've provided landscaping and islands, et cetera, around those parking areas. We think that's, that's justifiable. For the medical office building, we're talking potentially 400 parking spots. Some of that will obviously be underground, but it's still a big parking lot of over 250 lots above grade, ungrade, as well as the mixed use building and then the park area. We felt it was appropriate to require that interior landscaping in those, in those situations, so there is a condition for that one, but we did allow the adjustment for the residential Concerning the facade treatment for the recreation building, what our, what our code requires is that the street-facing facade requires 60% transparency. The applicant has proposed a building design that is, that is broken up. It has quite a bit of articulation in the design of the front of the building, the pedestrian access, there's a defined entryway into that building, and then they've really focused some of the more transparency on the backside to where the Cove views are and whatnot. And just based on the design of the building, the quality of the work, the pedestrian connection from the right-of-way to that building, once again, it avoids that long blank look of which we try and avoid along our public right-of-ways. And as I stated earlier, they have adjusted, they have requested the nine adjustments, and we believe that the overall impacts of those adjustments are more than mitigated through in the site layout and design of the pedestrian walkways, open space parks, and building design as proposed. I think now we'll turn it over to Nancy Kraschaw, and there were questions raised... Let me find my list. Concerning what work has been done on the site in terms of looking at anything that may have been buried on the site, what work's been done, what mitigation's been done, what monitoring's been done, you know, what are the impacts of potential groundwater transfer from the Rossman landfill on the other side of the railroad in I-205 through this site into the Cove? And so Nancy has some information that she'll be hearing, and she provided a memo that's dated today, January 26, and that'll be entered as Exhibit I, and the subjects are Agnes Road information and the Clackamas Cove information.
Good evening, good evening, Chair Powell and Planning Commissioners. I wanted to just take a few minutes. I did provide you a memo, so there's plenty of documentation for you here, but I wanted to summarize a lot of work that's been done in the past that concerns the soil and groundwater conditions at the Clackamas Cove site. As you can imagine, there have been many, many parties that have studied the soil and the groundwater in this area, predominantly because of the presence of the two landfills in the, that particular drainage basin, one being the Old Rossman landfill, which is not on the city's Clackamas Cove property, but it is across the old traction line railroad tracks between there and I-205. And presently, Clackamas County owns a fair amount of that, and then there also are some private property owners in there. So that's one of the landfills of concern that has, people have been concerned about its impact on the soil and groundwater in the area for decades. And then the permitted Rossman landfill, which is on Washington Street across I-205 from the Clackamas Cove area, is also something that has been studied and monitored in terms of its impact on soil and groundwater conditions down, down gradient from it. As part of its allowance to be a landfill in the first place, and then also, of course, as its permitted closure, or its closure permit requires extensive monitoring. In addition to that, the city prepared, we contracted with a consultant before the Urban Renewal Agency purchased the property, and there was a strong need at that time by that city commission and Urban Renewal Agency that the city not purchase property that had significant environmental problems. They didn't want the responsibility. In fact, that's one reason why we never took deed to the Old Rossman landfill, which is across the traction tracks there. And what I can tell you is that when we performed our Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments, we found that there are, based on the past activities at the site, as you know, this, the Cove was a gravel pit, it was mined, and for a long time, they just dredged or took material out of the Cove and used it up for concrete and predominantly concrete at the time at the site. And then they also then opened up the mouth of the Cove so that they could transport it out down the Willamette River. Then when they ran out of gravel, they transported material to the Cove to continue to produce asphalt and concrete. And some of those practices can be a little messy. You, with asphalt, you're combining the gravel with essentially liquid... You, with asphalt, you're combining the gravel with essentially liquid asphalt. And so what we found in doing extensive investigation at the site, we found sort of isolated pockets of hydrocarbon contaminated soils. And predominantly, these were from the heavier range hydrocarbons that are associated with asphalt. And the, the problem constituents of those heavier oils are the polyaromatic hydrocarbons, which are polyhydro, uh, polyarom, polyaromatic hydrocarbons. That is a very difficult thing to say. PAHs.
Let's just call it that.
Yeah, sorry. And those do have carcinogenic impacts. But at this particular site, the pockets are really isolated. So, it's not like the entire site has this contamination below it. And what we didn't find was those kinds of constituents in the groundwater itself. Asphalt and its constituents tends to be fairly immobile, unlike benzines and the lighter hydrocarbons that can either go off into the air, or they're a little more easily transported through a medium such as groundwater. These particular hydrocarbons tend to kind of stay put. So, we, in, in sampling the groundwater at the site, we did find that, oh, back to the soils, I wanted to finish up with soils first. We found this odd little area in which there were elevated levels of arsenic. And we weren't, we weren't ever able to positively conclude if it was just background concentrations that are found in the soils, or maybe some soils that had been brought to the site and left behind, or it was something that perhaps was remnant from treating wood to make it weather resistant, that sort of thing. And at the end of our investigations, we found that we could negotiate a prospective purchasers agreement with DEQ, and we addressed the arsenic in that agreement, and I'll get back to that in a few minutes. And then when we were sampling the groundwater, the, the memo I gave you has a map, has the prospective purchasers agreement attached to it, or, and at the back of that, there's a map that shows the-
That's going to be Exhibit C. Oh, did you give them one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I gave them a packet. That shows all of the various test pits and monitoring wells that have been sampled in that area. It just gives you some sense that this is not an area that has unknown environmental conditions. It's kind of similar to, well, I, I'm pretty amazed that there's so many soil samples and that have been taken from this area, which makes, which assures me that all of the conclusions that have been drawn have been fairly consistent, and there can always be some risk of some unknown pocket of something. But surely with all the information we have and it being fairly consistent, I feel like we have a pretty sound understanding of the site. The monitoring wells that we sampled, we found constituents that are typical of landfill leachate, and the parameters that we found were, could not found in every sample, but they were sort of interspersed amongst the groundwater samples. We found some elevated conductivity, alkalinity, chemical oxygen demand, ions including calcium, magnesium, sodium, et cetera. And these are generally not considered toxic constituents if, if in, found in groundwater. They tend to impart nuisance characteristics such as bad taste, color staining. But these are not materials that are found to have, that would be considered harmful for human and environmental health for future development of the site. The other thing that has been interesting, as the samples, the records that we have reviewed, and then we did some sediment sampling, it doesn't appear that these materials are in the cove water itself. I know that the applicant did some more recent ground, or surface water sampling from the cove, and as far as I understand it, they found the same, that the, the levels of kind of things that you wish you weren't in the water are not elevated to the point where they are harmful for human contact. They wouldn't, I wouldn't say that the water in the Willamette River, or the cove, or many, many other water bodies that people have contact, human contact with necessarily want to use as your public drinking water supply without significant treatment, such as done in the city of Wilsonville. But in terms of human contact, these are not levels that would not allow for development of the cove. Back to the prospective purchasers agreement, I do, I go, in my memo, I talk a little bit about the sediment sampling that we performed back in 1998, and that was required by DEQ in an area where there had been a lot of in-water activity with the barging. And we did find some metals, but they were, they seemed to be representative of the background concentrations in the native regional soils. And there was a low amount of petroleum constituents, and these were not found to be high enough to be unacceptable for future development in the area, for human health and risk, for risk to human health and the environment. The other thing of note, in just terms of the water quality in the cove, due to the fact that it tends to flush itself out every seven days or so, it's closely, it's married to the Willamette River in terms of that tidal action. And the Clackamas River has some impact, the Clackamas River out of the, choosing between the Clackamas and the Willamette, obviously the Clackamas River has less chemicals and other kinds of what we would consider to be potential contaminants. Clackamas River has less potential for that because it doesn't have as many sources of human activity, industrial activity, et cetera, being discharged into the Clackamas River. That's, you guys know that. So, before we purchased the property, we felt like it was important for the city to have limits to our future liability of this property we were purchasing. And, and yet at the same token, we felt it was really important to purchase it with the hopes that some development there one day would be able to take it out of its blighted condition, which is the whole idea of urban renewal, is to take a blighted property and turn it into productive use for the public and the economy, the local economy, in this case, it could be the regional economy. So, what we did was we learned about the prospective purchasers agreement that the state officer offers other public agencies, and I'm not sure, maybe, maybe some public, private, private entities. And this, what this allowed us to do is place exact limitations on what our future liabilities would be, and also provide a direction for what should be required as, in the future of this cove, particularly if it developed. And essentially, there's the remediation of the arsenic, which it was very elusive, it was hard to go back to find it when we went to take care of it. But as I recall in our DEQ's files, that has been taken care of. The other thing that was important for this site was as there was underground activity, if there were construction workers, utility workers, that they be trained in recognizing hydrocarbon-type contaminants, and that there be a health and safety plan as, for all construction of that nature, so that if something was found, people would know how to react, and then know what kinds of, what kind of process to go through to protect, if there was, if there was something, to make sure that there wasn't the ability of it to spread or whatever, and to basically deal with it. And then DEQ would get involved and work with the city or the future property owner on what kinds of remediation might be required. And what it was really, at the end of the prospective purchasers agreement, it was really concluded that the kinds of materials that could be run into could be easily managed, and DEQ felt like future development of the site was great, just keep us informed. That's really the bottom line. And so that, I think, really is all about the environmental conditions at the site and the area around it, as much as I have to offer right now. Obviously can answer questions as time, as the meeting goes on.
I just had one question while you're here. It seems to me back in, it was in 98, we bought that property, it seemed to me that DEQ did have some requirement that we hadn't monitor and maintain those wells. And, and can you, and I, maybe I'm wrong, I just don't, that's a long time ago. But it seems to me that we were, we were supposed to be testing, testing these along the way. Has there been any movement of any of these through the well testing?
We are not required to continue monitoring. I know that the Rossman landfill, which has a closure permit, they monitor some of the wells that they, they own. And I'm not sure if they still monitor any of the ones in the particular Clackamas Cove area, but they, on the other side of I-205, they do monitoring regularly.
Okay, thanks.
So, if I understand correctly, we're talking about some, some toxic material, PAHs, I guess, they don't, they're not mobile, they're not moving around a lot. So, they stay in one place? And how deep are they?
Well, like I said, these are isolated areas. So, depending on what the, what was happening at that time of, that, in the era of that being an asphalt and concrete batch plant, it could have been, it could be, I, we didn't find anything deeper than about five feet, from my recollection. So, I would say, you know, unless something odd was going on in one part of that land at some point, probably within the top five feet of the surface. There's also a lot of concrete rubble out there because they would just empty their, you know, what do you do with extra concrete?
Right, I saw that in the Geotech report, it was that there's a lot of fill out there already, maybe 14 or 15 feet worth of fill.
Depends on where the-
So, this material is, is in that top layer, I guess.
Yeah.
And did, did any of the reports find other toxic material that would be more fluid, that would move?
The only location where we found the carcinogenic kind of toxic material was benzene was found way up at the north end of the site, but it was coming from an off-site spill, there had been an underground storage tank that had had some releases. And Tri-City wastewater treatment plant, they have an agreement with DEQ that they clean up the properties that they purchased over there. And that includes, not only that, they're responsible for mitigating the impacts from that release. They're also in the process of capping the old Rossman landfill, which will help reduce the potential for any kind of migration. Granted, it's been going on for years, but it will really help reduce future migration of any kind of materials through the old Rossman landfill. And then, of course, the new Rossman landfill, or the permitted one, has a permit, they've been capping that thing for years, as you know. And so, all in all, some of those sources are really considered to be somewhat mitigated at this point. Yeah, and we, when we were building the multipurpose trail at Clackamas Cove, we ran into one of these isolated pockets of asphalt, and we ended up excavating a fair amount of it and hauling it to another landfill, and where that's permitted to take that kind of material. And then we, basically, DEQ wanted us to create sort of a, an area that we, we packed in some soil to kind of cap it on the lateral side, and that was considered sufficient for mitigating that kind of a find, so to speak.
And so at the last, our last meeting, there was some concern about some toxics leaching from the Rossman landfill on the other side of I-205. So, what you're telling us is that the likelihood of toxics leaching from that location down to this cove location is, what, zero to minimal, or how would we describe that?
Well, like I mentioned, we found constituents in the groundwater that are typical of landfill leachate, but these are not constituents that are, at the levels they were found, that are considered a danger to human health and the environment.
Thank you.
Ready to move on, or additional questions for Nancy Kraschaw?
Please, looking forward.
Thank you. As we work through the concept development plan approval criteria, we talked about the transportation system. And the transportation system has sufficient capacity based on the city's level of service standards, and is capable of safely supporting the development proposed in addition to the existing and planned uses in the area, where we made adequate by the time each phase of development is completed. And as part of this application, through the 10 years of the phasing in of this, the applicant will be providing a relocated Main Street. Both Main Street and Agnes are collectors on our TSP. And they're shown, Agnes is shown on our TSP connecting from Main Street to Agnes in front of Tri-Cities, which then connects into Washington Street. Washington Street, as you kind of come south on it, turns into 213 at the I-205 interchange. In Phase One, the applicant will be proposing full street improvements and the relocation of Main Street. And that section includes parking in some areas and no parking in others. They're proposing a 20-foot-wide Agnes section along the, in between where the residential units will go in later phases in I-205 to the North Park area. And then from the North Park area to the Agnes in front of Tri-Cities, they're proposing a 20-foot gravel connection for emergency access. What the staff has found is that Agnes has historically been used for vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle connectivity. As I'm sure all of you are aware, Agnes has deteriorated over time, and the decision was made to close it to vehicular traffic until it could be remedied. It was open for bikes and ped to this day until we've got the detour in there for the Tri-Cities work that's going on, which relocates or redirects people down the Clackamas Cove Trail. And so, we've, we've put on a condition of approval for the application in Phase One, is to provide a half-street from where Agnes is located right now in front of Tri-Cities to the North Park area. And that half-street would include two bike lanes, an 11-foot travel lane, a planter strip, and a sidewalk. The remainder of that would be, would be constructed at a later date. We're also proposing the Main Street be designed as a one-way southbound. And there, and John Replinger, our traffic consultant, will go into this in a little bit more depth, but the concern is that if you're coming southbound on Washington Street towards the I-205 interchange, as you may, may be aware, you come up to a stop sign. And then you have 213 northbound traffic coming up and making the left onto 205 southbound ramp. So, the Washington Street has a stop sign, then they proceed to another stop sign to accommodate the traffic that's coming from 205 southbound off the Cloverleaf onto 213 southbound. So, there are two, two stop signs right there, and they're not operating at a level of service standard that's appropriate. So, that is the reason for why we have proposed Agnes to be one-way southbound until an I-205 interchange management plan can be constructed or put together, to figure out how do we deal with that interchange and how it's designed? And without cutting off all access for the existing residents that are there right now to have no access to Washington Street 205, which they have historically always had. Our argument is that by restricting it to the southbound only, we're not adding any new trips going north to Washington that would then go through that interchange, which is that movement of the Washington Street through those two stop signs, which is the movement of concern. As I've stated also, the applicant has incorporated round- As I've stated also, the applicant has incorporated roundabouts in their design for the Main Street Agnes intersection, and then the cross-sections. For Agnes Street at full buildout, we're only going to have a bike lane on one side, and that'll be for northbound movement. We believe that commuters will either use the travel lane on the 11-foot that's proposed as Agnes, or they'll actually go over and use the Esplanade as another bicycle route. So to try and reduce some of the impervious that we're creating out there, we think it is reasonable to put the bicycles either into the travel lane on Agnes for that short section between the North Park and Main Street, or they will utilize Esplanade as a north-south connection through that area. The other streets will have two bike, Main Street will have two bike lanes on it in both directions, and the sidewalks. I think at this point, I'm going to call up John Ruplinger from David Evans Associates to kind of walk through the transportation analysis that was done.
The materials that you received as part of your package included a 14-page letter of comments, followed the usual format for the review of traffic impact studies that covers 14 particular points. And there are a couple of those that are worth addressing in somewhat more detail. Tony has given you part of the introduction to that. Among other things, he did read the information about the approval criteria for a master plan, the operating at an appropriate level of service, and safely able to safely accommodate the existing development plus the proposed development. In the, my comment letter dated January 16th, I guess the part that I would go to immediately is the, first is about the analysis of traffic operations. The traffic analysis covered 23 intersections in the current conditions, 25 in the future conditions.
Excuse me, John. What's, are you in an exhibit or in the text itself? I'm trying to locate where--
Okay, an exhibit letter?
It is Exhibit 4.
Sure.
Exhibit 4?
All right, thank you.
Good. Thank you. There were 23 intersections analyzed in the existing conditions, 25 in the future conditions. The direction that we gave the applicant was to analyze all of the intersections analyzed as part of the river's development, anticipating that that could still move forward, and we wanted to assure consistency with that. That accounts for the difference in the number of intersections studied between the existing and the future, because the future was analyzed using the jug handle to solve the traffic issues at 213 and Washington Street. At any rate, we did go through, the applicant provided a detailed traffic impact study analyzing these intersections, provided us with the ability to judge whether the intersection met our level of service standards specified in the municipal code. Basically, that says, in most cases, signalized intersections need to operate level of service D with no approach worse than E. And in going through the traffic impact study, there were some intersections that deserved a little bit of additional discussion and attention. Part of this was because of the issues raised by the staff from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Part of it has to do with the difference of how they interpret our code and how we have typically interpreted it. The, on patient number four, I have some of those intersections identified that I'd like to walk through in a little bit more detail. The I-205 and Oregon 99E southbound ramp is predicted to operate, meeting the city's level of service standards. At the I-205 and 99E northbound ramp terminal, again, that's predicted to meet the city's level of service D standard in those locations. At the 205 and 213 ramp terminals, we have a little bit of a unique situation there. As Tony described, we have very high volumes of traffic interchanging between 213 and 205, both northbound and southbound, and both of those ramp terminals are unsignalized intersections. There are a couple maneuvers that are difficult to make and re-experience long delays. Tony mentioned, as you're leaving, for example, the park or the Tri-City water treatment plant headed southbound on 213, you do encounter two stop signs and have a lot of conflicting traffic you need to yield to. According to the way that the city staff intends that Agnes Street be operated, there would be no traffic exiting Cove that would make that southbound movement onto Washington Street transitioning to 213. So our interpretation is that even those of poor level of service at those two stop signs today, that we consider, would recommend that you consider that those, that that ramp terminal operates acceptably, meeting the criteria we have in the code. Likewise, traffic exiting, if you are northbound on 205 and intend to go to the water treatment plant or the park, for example, you do have a, again, a very difficult left turn to make at that location because of the high conflicting traffic. Again, we do not anticipate-- Thank you. So this is a, is a diff-- Whoop, there it went. Okay. Yeah, so to orient you, this is, this is Agnes Street. This is what we refer to as Washington Street. This is the southbound ramp terminal. This is the first one I was describing, that you have to stop here, and then you have to stop here to proceed. We have very high volumes of left turns here, there are very high volumes of this right-hand movement. So again, our interpretation is, or our recommendation is, that as long as no traffic can come from the Cove onto Agnes Street like this, they will not encounter either of those problematic turns. And then the other one I was starting to describe before Tony handed me this handy device, is the, is the left turn here. Coming from 205 northbound, this is a difficult left turn to make because of the conflicting traffic. We don't see any particular reason why someone would be found on this section of 205 northbound. They would most likely have taken the 99E exit to get to the, to get to the Cove, or you know, Oregon City Shopping Center or anything like that. So again, our interpretation from the staff level is that the failure of these particular low-volume, and they are very low-volume movements, five or 10 or as many, I think the highest location was 20 vehicles attempting that during the peak hour. It's not a high-volume movement. We don't anticipate that any of the traffic from this development would try to use it. So we don't think we're compounding it. And we'd consider at a staff level to be meeting the standards and would urge you to make that determination as well.
John, I don't, this may be a question for staff, but in reading ODOT's report, it sounds like they want no traffic between, or Agnes to be a, basically not connected. And we're, we're looking at a possible one-way, is that correct?
It's the staff's intent that it be operated as one-way, so that traffic could go into the Cove, which is a relatively easy movement to make, sorry, going up here and turning on Agnes Street.
Right. In the, in the notes here, the ODOT claims that there are some legal issues with this, or is that something that needs to be worked out?
We have had lots of discussions on that, and I think ODOT staff representatives are here and they want to address that directly. It's, it's our interpretation from staff level that we have a collector street shown in the city's TSP that extends that, you know, it is Agnes Street, and it comes here, in addition to which it crosses the river connecting with Gladstone. But staff interpretation is that we must seek to, to cause this developer to build the streets according to the TSP as written, as we do with other development projects.
Thank you.
The, the Washington Street 213 intersection, of course, is a very high-volume intersection right now with about 4,000 vehicles per hour during the, during the AM peak hour and about 5,000 during the PM peak hour. We think that we have identified a good solution for that. It does mean, we, we need to hope that the, that the river's development is going to move forward to contribute a lot to getting that built. The calculation provided by the applicant is that the amount of traffic going through the Washington Street 213 intersection would be fewer than 40, fewer than 20 vehicles during either the AM peak hour or the PM peak hour. And we would recommend that you find that to be of no significance with regard to determining whether the intersection is meeting the operational standards we have in the code.
And the 20 wasn't just an arbitrary number. When we do traffic impact studies in the city, if you're generating, is it, is 20?
20 is the cutoff point at which we don't even, we require an applicant to analyze the impact on intersections down to the level of 20. So had, had we not independently specified to the applicant that they study all of the intersections studied for the rivers, they would have gotten to the, you know, the next intersection and just stopped their analysis there, so they would not have even been required under our usual guidance, our adopted standards, to even analyze the intersection.
So that's where that 20 number comes into, and we're talking five or 10 trips, that's why we're making the finding recommendation that we are. And I think going back also to the connection of Agnes and the implementation of our TSP, providing that connect, that connection over through to Main Street has the potential to actually be a benefit to that movement on Washington Street. If you can pick up some of those homes that are currently going through that stop sign, because they have no alternative. It is a cul-de-sac, it is a one-way, one-way, and one-way out right now. Providing this, does, with the southbound connection, does offer them an alternative to not go through that interchange and get to Main Street and to 99E or into downtown Oregon City.
So, you know, as Tony explained, there are some homes here, of course, the water treatment plant here, but some homes here, and right now their only option is to come out. Providing the one-way connection on, on Agnes Street would at least allow them to use--
An alternative route.
An alternative. The other intersection worth mentioning is the intersection of 14th and Main Street that is predicted by the applicant to slightly degrade in terms of its level of service with expectation that it could reach level of service E. And I've recommended, or what I've tried to describe here, is that we know we have the McLaughlin Boulevard project going on right now that will add a new traffic signal at 12th. So I anticipate that we will see a shift in traffic patterns between 14th, 12th, and 10th, so that we'll have a little bit of adjustment of the amount of traffic. In fact, I don't foresee the degradation to level of service E as predicted, if we just kind of stick with just the numbers. So my conclusion with this is, in terms of the traffic operations, I think that by interpreting these, these particular difficult intersections and saying that since the code is not adding traffic to those, and at the Washington and 213, that you're not adding a significant amount of traffic, and the adjustment of traffic patterns at 14th and Main, I think that the operational standards, level of service D with no, no approach worse than E, I think you're safe in making the conclusion that those operational standards are met with the full development of this property as described in the proposed master plan. The other part that I would direct your attention to is the crash information is one of the other parts that we ask an applicant to address in terms of the, of the traffic impact studies. And the applicant has done, I think, pretty comprehensive analysis of the crash information. The applicant is, is proposing to develop outright, you know, permitted uses. They're not adding any kind of an extraordinary or kind of traffic generator. We're not talking about schools with high volumes of pedestrians. We're not talking about truck terminal with lots of oversized vehicles, we're just talking about kind of typical amount of traffic. There would be some increase in traffic from this site, but nothing that I would foresee that would materially affect the crash rate of most of these locations. We did have conversations with ODOT staff, and again, they may want to address this in more detail, but the criteria in terms of the master plan are to safely accommodate the existing and the planned uses. We don't have a definition of safety, and part of it is up for you, up to you to decide on what that definition is and what's safe enough. In terms of the safety issues brought about, raised by ODOT, they would point to the section of Oregon 99, and they're going to tell you it's a SPIS location, which is a safety priority index system location. There are a number of crashes that occur, but not, in my view, an extraordinary number. Not enough, in my view, to require them to implement significant mitigation measures. But again, it's up to you to decide on that, and you may be persuaded by the ODOT staff presentations. One of the concerns that we all have is, this entryway is known as Firestone Drive Way. Right now, it is designated for right turn out, and it is a right turn in movement as permitted. This is a median that has a double yellow on it, which technically means that left turns are not permitted from this into Doone's Drive. However, the traffic counts and I think observations by people who drive the car to regularly tell you that lots and lots of people do it. The traffic volume cited in the track study, I think, indicated 50 vehicles during one peak hour and 70 vehicles during another. And actually, it is a pretty, pretty attractive location at which to make an admittedly illegal left turn, because when the signal for Doone's Drive becomes green for the, for Doone's Drive or for the shopping center, it automatically disrupts traffic and creates a gap in the oncoming traffic, making it very easy for people to make that turn. According to supplemental analysis conducted by the applicant, there were three crashes identified at this location in the last five years, which is not a high crash rate. Probably a greater concern is the short distance. This, this road is the route that takes one to Main Street and ultimately to the Cove. There are some concerns that as, as people are seeking to make this left turn to go to the Cove, and people are seeking to come out of the-- Cove and people are seeking to come out of the parking lot, that there could be conflicts here resulting in enough traffic tie-up that people will end up staffing out onto the state highway, which is something that should be avoided. There have been some preliminary discussions between the city staff and ODOT staff, as well as representatives of the applicant. And a condition of approval that we've recommended would be to have the developer responsible for either a monetary contribution to let ODOT solve this, do some pavement markings, stop signs, perhaps even barriers down here because ODOT believes that this section of road is under their jurisdiction so they would have the authority to implement those improvements. We think that would be a reasonable condition and something to be used to enhance the safety of the facility. There are also concerns raised by ODOT staff about the operations of the ramp terminals at 99E and 205. These are some very busy intersections, both this ramp terminal and the next. We do have some long queues. You can even see in this photograph right here that we have a fairly considerable queue during a period of time of not very heavy traffic. ODOT would prefer to see the queue lengthened and may have some, they have had some suggestions that that should be a condition of approval. Our view is, from the staff level, that the amount of traffic generated by the Cove is probably not sufficient to require the mitigation for what may be an existing condition. So I think those are the highlights of my analysis of the applicant's traffic impact study. And I think that you can make a finding that this, the criteria from the master plan, the master plan approval criteria in the city code are not by this. You may be persuaded by alternative testimony, and I will be here to respond to further questions. If you come up with them later, I'll respond to some now as your choice.
Okay. Thank you, Johnny.
I have one question right now. At the end of the letter, you make a recommendation for the city to provide $20,000 for use by the city and ODOT to make access modifications for Firestone Drive. Where'd the $20,000 number come from?
We had some preliminary discussions among staff, and that's not a detailed estimate. I think the applicant would probably prefer a specific dollar amount. I think there may still be some uncertainty about what can actually be done, what can legally be done, rather than have the applicant actually perform improvements on the state system.
And in general, what is the process, the process that the city and/or the state engage in when a state facility, a state traffic facility like Highway 99, becomes unsafe? Is it generally the state that initiates a safety improvement? Or do they wait for a big accident to happen and then they take an action? Or does the city make a proposal to the state? Who has the responsibility for saying, "This is so unsafe, we have to take an action"?
Well, I think our job is to apply our city approval criteria. So in terms of that definition of safely accommodate the development and the existing and the future existing and proposed development, I think if we concluded that it was becoming unsafe because of the applicant's traffic, we would probably, staff recommend, that you have a condition that mitigated for that. When it's an existing condition, that's probably a matter of negotiation. The fact that we have an identified SPIS location, that to probably hear more about from the ODOT staff, the state highway system is a state responsibility. I think there have probably been many cases where local agencies have sought to advance a state project by supplying match money, for example. But I think every situation is unique and is negotiated somehow among those who see the problem and those who are most able to solve it and those who are able to fund it.
The notion of safety does seem to be a subjective thing. I think everyone in this room might have a different idea of what safe means.
Yes.
One other thing, if you could clarify for me, the southbound traffic on 99E that wants to turn left into the Firestone Alley.
Yes.
Is that still intended to be a legal left-hand turn for the applicant's project or not?
The applicant assumed that traffic would continue to make that left turn. They did, however, also analyze it as if that left turn were not available and the traffic could be accommodated at Doone Drive at the signalized intersection.
So I'm confused about what it is we're looking at in terms of the detailed development plan or the master plan at this point. Are we looking at a left-hand turn for a southbound motorist on 99 or not? If this project is moved to be approved, what are we looking at?
Well, I think that the answer is that ODOT has within its authority to modify any access to the state highway system as it so chooses. So ODOT could go out there and improve the signing today, for example, it makes it clear that there is no left turn. It could be enforced, or ODOT could go out and put in a barrier medium to cause it to be an actual no-left turn as opposed to an illegal left turn.
Thank you. John, could you clarify the level of service on 99 and 205, north and southbound? Is it within the city's?
Yes, at both of those locations. The operational performance of the intersection meets the city's level of service standard.
And this, the TIA is saying that the added, which I think we now know that traffic's going to be going on 99.
Yes.
To 205 from everything that we've said. And with the additional traffic, that will still stay within?
That will still stay within the parameters we have for established level of service operational performance in the city code.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Getting back to the staff report, one thing we also did look at was the pedestrian bicycle access. And one issue raised by the planning commissioner at the last meeting was a connection between Main Street and the back of the Oregon City Shopping Center. And so what we've done is we've attached a condition of, recommending a condition of approval that calls for the applicant to modify the concept plan, to identify a local street connection through what we're calling the medical office building site to the back of the Oregon City Shopping Center. The applicant wouldn't be required to build it at this time nor put up money for that local street improvement at this time. The objective is to get the connection. You know, the timing of the redevelopment of Oregon City Shopping Center is, can't be determined at this point. But we felt it was important to get that connection. And the applicant is probably going to come forward and talk about that a little bit, and we'll be happy to, you know, hear what they have to say and your concerns after you hear additional testimony concerning that connection and if we need to tweak that condition of approval in any way. I think at our last meeting, we did discuss the water quality resource area. And as I did explain, the, I'm sorry.
Do we have a presentation from the State of Oregon Department of Transportation?
Yes.
Okay. So we're moving toward that or we're changing? Are we moving off of traffic now?
Yeah, I was going to wrap up the staff report and then open it up for the public, unless you'd like to do it in a different manner.
It's whatever you'd like.
Oh, great. And I'll try and wrap up the staff report, and we'll come back and touch the issues you guys would like to discuss. Perfect. So the applicant did submit a water quality resource area report, looking at the impacts associated with it. They did find that the, you know, the site is degraded. It has anywhere from a 20 to 30-foot vegetated corridor that's existing out there currently. On average, if, when this application or this project is implemented, you'll have an average 175-foot vegetated corridor around the resource. And then we will actually have, with the relocation of Main Street, and then the applicant did request a variance to encroach into the 50-foot buffer for the mixed-use building. Even with that slight encroachment, you'd still have a net of 6,800 roughly square feet of new net increase in the vegetated corridor around that site. The applicant did request that variance for the medical office building, or the mixed-use building to encroach just because of the location on that peninsula, very limited ability to get a building in there with sufficient parking as well as getting it above the flood plain. But as I stated, they have mitigated beyond the requirements of our code in restoring that habitat, that vegetated corridor to the good condition as defined by our code. We have applied, attached several conditions of approval to the application. It's just, it is complicated when you're running the two phases of the development plan with the concept plan at the same time. Realize it's a lot of information. You know, because it went through the subdivision process, Chapter 16, our normal residential subdivision requirements are applicable. Through the larger infrastructure review of the concept plan, those details of the subdivision criteria have been met. The subdivision's really tailored towards single-family residential development. We don't have a commercial subdivision process. So, you know, things such as minimum lot frontage and whatnot really aren't applicable in a large concept master plan in this case where they're really just trying to relocate lots for development in future phases. What we did go through and did identify the condition number one, which talks about the right-of-way connection through the medical office building site to the Oregon City Shopping Center. And I won't go through all of these. Some of these are standard conditions that we put in it that you see every time concerning compliance with our engineering policies, erosion control being required. Those are standard conditions of approval that we attach to land use decisions. We've also laid out the street sections that need to be, that need to be provided with the Phase 1 and Phase 2, including the construction of Agnes, which was different than what the applicant proposed for the connection from the North Park area to Agnes right next to Tri-Cities facility. Mr. Eplinger talked about addressing the Firestone access, Firestone Drive Way, and the $20,000 for potential improvements to improve the circulation from the Oregon City Shopping Center into the ODOT right-of-way along Firestone Alley. Condition 13, we did ask the applicant to submit a revised tree plan. What we do when an application comes in is we overlay water quality resource areas in public right-of-way and public easements and building footprints. And if a tree falls within one of those areas, they don't need to be mitigated. It's the trees outside of those areas that we require mitigation by our code. So we've asked the applicant to overlay those areas with the tree removal plan so we can get an accurate number on any additional mitigation of trees that might be required as part of Phase 1 and Phase 2. Condition 20 lays out the half-street and the full-street improvements that we discussed. Really, this is in there because we had the applicant for Agnes Street along the residential units between Main and the North Park. Originally, the sidewalk was to be located on the 205 side of Agnes Street, and we're conditioning to put it on the residential side. That's why those are in there. We agree with the other cross-sections that the applicant's proposed for Main Street with the alternate locations for parking and whatnot that would coincide with where the buildings are being proposed. And then condition number 25, this is the condition concerning the parking for the medical office building. The applicant has entered information in the record, and I'm sure they'll be discussing about the studies that have shown that these medical office buildings require a little bit more parking per thousand than what our code requires, and we'll be happy to amend that condition as the commission sees fit. Commissioner Dunn, returning back to your question about the carpool and vanpool parking. At the maximum build-out, the office, the office used to have 142 spots, and 5% of that would be seven, carpool, vanpool. The medical office building at maximum build-out would have 266. That would equate to 13 vanpool, carpool. And the restaurant would have 80 at its maximum build-out, which would be four. So you're looking at 24 versus six.
It would be six.
If you had two at each one of those.
Oh, okay. So not two total?
Right.
All right.
And with that, I'll be happy to go over additional conditions or clarifications.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, I had a small one. The proposal wasn't provided to Trinet for review because, because why?
Our TSP doesn't identify Main Street or Agnes as transit streets at this time?
By, the way I read it, if there were lines adjacent to the development, then Trinet would be reviewing the proposal. Did I misread that?
I'll have to go back and look.
Page 23.
I think so.
That's what I read.
And I can check on that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, staff, at this point? Nope, I guess we're okay.
Okay. Would you like to roll into the applicant's presentation or take a couple-minute break?
Can I ask one more?
Sure, staff. Certainly.
There's been a lot of the use of the phrase shovel-ready projects bending about recently with the ODOT's concern about safety on Highway 99 East. Does the city or the city and the state have a shovel-ready project to mitigate the state's safety concerns in that transportation corridor?
Actually, as.
Does the city have a list of shovel-ready projects?
I guess I'll start, and Ms. Kraschaw can probably follow up, as I'm sure she's working on that project list right now. As part of the McLaughlin project they're doing right now, incorporated into that project has actually been, if you're going down 99E southbound and you're going to get in the left turn to get onto 205 northbound, we do have a restriping project that will be incorporated into our project to extend that queue lane. So there has been some, I believe, some spillover of that queue into the through lane. So that'll be a project that we're incorporating to address that safety concern at that movement. Not sure how much, want to go into detail concerning, our TSP calls for double lefts off of 99E southbound onto the 205 southbound ramp. The 205 southbound ramp currently has two meters, two lanes, two meters. There's concern raised by ODOT that that's not a project they want to see because the 205 southbound on-ramp isn't wide enough to accommodate two lanes queuing up, even though it's designed with the two ramps and two cars queue up currently. And then there's concern about the acceleration lane under the Abernathy Bridge. So there was another proposal to provide double lefts, or side-by-side lefts on 99E at Doone to buy a little bit more queue space. Problem is, it's not in any plan. It hasn't been reviewed for what other trickle-down impacts if that's done. So the city is currently achieving a special transportation designation for that section in 99E as well. So I think a lot of, in that section between the Clackamas River and Doone Drive, has the potential to change just based on additional work that's going to come forward. So I'm not sure that, I'll defer to Nancy at this point to know if we have an exact project designed.
Right. Well, we have obtained special transportation area status for McLaughlin Boulevard. Boulevard between Clackamas River and Doones Drive. At least it's at the Oregon Transportation Commission, as I understand it now. Then we also have officially special transportation area status between 15th Street and the tunnel. And as you know, we are underway on a, it's pass shovel-ready, it's shovel-in-the-ground on our Phase One McLaughlin Boulevard enhancements project. That, our vision for McLaughlin Boulevard is to create a much more pedestrian-friendly, multimodal highway through there. And as you know, currently in the past, it's really primarily served vehicle and truck traffic, which it should. I mean, it is a state highway. But what we'd like to see through the Oregon City area is for things to slow down, and for, just that alone is gonna create much safer conditions, and to have more vibrant pedestrian, multimodal atmosphere just kind of changes the entire character down there. So that being said, we have our Phase Two McLaughlin Boulevard project that is definitely shovel-ready. As a matter of fact, we are in competition for federal funding through Metro as we speak. And we were turned down on that project, the last round of Metro funding that comes through the federal government. But we are very hopeful that this time we get it. And that's a project, again, it's a Boulevard project, is intended to make better sidewalks, to have a gateway into Oregon City, which is sorely needed up there. And it's changing the character, the environment of the highway in that area that I think is gonna make it safer. And then again, as Tony said, those dual-left turns are called out in terms of actually accommodating the queue that builds up to go onto I-205 southbound. And, you know, for us just to change the TSP and do, kind of do a, agree to doing a project that's been drawn up on a piece of paper, that hasn't been thought out in terms of what that, how that impacts the corridor that we've been already planning for years and years, is troublesome to us. So we feel like we're doing what we can to make improvements where it's possible. The other shovel-ready project that we have that we're actually trying to promote as part of the economic stimulus package, hopefully, is the jug handle, which we haven't talked about at all tonight. But that project would be to completely improve the traffic operations and level of service, et cetera, at Washington Street and Highway 213. That project also, when constructed, would probably eliminate some of those left-turn stop-controlled movements that we saw that are, we all know they're troublesome. I see those as being unsafe movements. So if that project were to get funded, it would also, in that part of the project area, provide for much more safe conditions for the traveling public.
The project that is located between the Clackamas River and Doones Drive, so the status of that is that it's part of the McLaughlin Boulevard enhancement program, but it's not yet funded? Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there a timeline yet for when that might be considered for funding?
Well, right now, in fact, I was just looking at a memo from Metro. They are in the decision-making process, and we are being considered for funding in this round. And that money, I believe, is 2012, 2012, about 2013. But we tried to get in there as quick as we could.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I just have one other. The parking for the North Park, is that gonna be designated for the park, or will it just be held as part of the total parking? Will there be signs saying restricted for the park, uh, North Park, or it'll be open?
That is, we've proposed now. Now, the applicant is proposing to provide two parking spaces for each residential unit.
So you feel there's sufficient parking?
Yeah, they've maxed out the residential parking requirement. Believe it should be, you know, based on the use of the, you know, the use of the building.
So I'll find my parking spot there. That's good.
How many would you like?
This one.
Okay. Would you like a break, or you want to move on to the applicants?
I'm good.
Okay. We'll move on.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Meister Bone. I'm a planner with WRG Design in Portland, Oregon. Here this evening representing Pacific Property Search. Part of a larger development team, we've got the master developers here, Randy Tyler and Ed Darrow. Behind me, I have Phil Worth, who's the lead transportation consultant, and then I have the lead engineer on the project here as well, Chetamir Jessick. There's been several concerns expressed regarding the safety of the development in terms of the floodplain, previous development, and proximity to Tri-City treatment facility. Nancy addressed many of those concerns, so I'm just gonna touch on a little bit of that. You know, some folks would like to see more studies. You've heard that sentiment expressed. Some folks would like to see more density, some folks would like to see less density, some folks would like to see no development at all. You know, the, I guess the point of that is, this development can't be all things all people. The city, in their comprehensive plan, has articulated a vision for this area. And they've also articulated that through supporting documents, that comprehensive plans, such as the downtown waterfront, master plan, and urban renewal plan. PPS has worked with city staff to meld that vision articulated in those documents, along with public sentiment. We've held several meetings where we've engaged the public to get some feedback about the development of the site, and in turn, the actual master plan for the area has changed as those meetings have occurred. For over two years, we've worked on the preparation of the Cove Concept Development Plan, which would be the guiding vision for this area of the community. And as I mentioned, we've engaged a multidisciplinary team. We have engineers, we have architects, we have landscape architects, planners, biologists, geologists, arbiters, all working together on this plan. I guess my point there is to just, you know, highlight that we have been actively engaged in working on this project. We're aware of the issues, the concerns. We feel we've addressed those all within the application. So first, I was just gonna touch on some of the concerns on the site. So again, we have some natural hazard concerns on the site. We're, again, we're in the 100-year floodplain. We're also located in an area that has some geological concerns, so we're raised at the last meeting. This is the rendered site plan. Thanks. Okay, thanks. So first, we're gonna talk about FEMA's 100-year floodplain. That's why PPS sought out these professionals I just mentioned. Chetamir Jessick, who's the lead project engineer, is also an Association State Floodplain Manager, Certified Floodplain Manager. So not only is he a professional engineer, he's also a Certified Floodplain Manager. And he's overseen the design of the site, including the proposed grading, the water quality design as well. 1742 of the Oregon City Municipal Code, the water quality overlay requires regulations to be developed for, in the floodplain. And the city establishes the base flood elevation of 50.7, which is again above FEMA's requirements. We're proposing to go above that 50.7 to 52 feet, which is actually more than a foot above that. And just to remind you, every cubic yard that we place on the site, we have to actually pull from the site as well. And the site's currently balanced to the benefit of the floodplain. So currently, the site, if developed as proposed in the concept plan, you actually have less material within that 100-year floodplain than what you currently have out there now. I think that's a pretty important thing to keep in mind. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the natural hazards, earthquake. So again, we have an area here that's identified that has geological hazards. We talked a little bit about this last time. These areas that are shown here in orange and red represent Zone A and Zone B of your relative earthquake hazard map. Because of the activity that's occurring on the site, because of the soils and what we're proposing, we're required to prepare several different studies to address concerns that you have articulated in your code. Those included soil erosion control plan, preliminary hydrology report dealing with how stormwater will be dealt with on-site, as well as a engineering geology report and prelimin, excuse me, preliminary soil engineering report. WRG prepared the soil erosion control plan, as well as preliminary hydrology report, and the applicant engaged with Ash Creek Associates to prepare a preliminary geotechnical assessment for the site. And this assessment included both geological and geotechnical investigation of the area. The conclusions of that preliminary investigation by Ash Creek was that the site is feasible to develop as proposed with the concept plan that you have before you, and that there weren't any areas that we're proposing to develop that we should be avoiding. Another thing that's important to point out is, again, this 35% slope shown is this red mark here. Several of those areas were actually be regrading to a three-to-one slope, so we're actually be leaving that in a more stable condition than what's currently out there. So just to summarize, we're aware of what the development constraints are on the site. We've been living with them for the last two and a half years. We think we've addressed them adequately. So this, again, just kind of shows that cut, again, kind of demonstrates how this is gonna be peeled back, flipped over, and how you're gonna have a much more stable gradual slope at the end of the day. So next, I just wanted to discuss some of the proposed conditions of approval. You know, one of the ones that we talked about that was just recently mentioned was the access to Oregon City Shopping Center down in this area here. And, you know, we understand the city's concerns of providing a connection, and, you know, we think it can be provided, and we think it can be accommodated on the site to the benefit of the development of the site, as well as the adjacent properties. The only thing that, you know, we request is, we're not quite comfortable with the wording of the condition. We'd request that you consider some alternate wording. Specifically, the condition of approval ties back to amending the concept development plan. We'd request that you consider looking at tying that to the detailed development plan for the actual medical office facility. I have some draft language here I thought I might read for your consideration. "As a part of the detailed development plan for the medical office site, the applicant should work with city staff to locate a connection to the OC Shopping Center. Should such a connection be determined to be feasible, the applicant shall dedicate right-of-way commensurate with its location." And again, I think that arrives at the same point of where staff was trying to get, but because of the uncertainties with how and when that Oregon City Shopping Center will develop, and how that actual site will develop in the future, we want to make sure that we're not pigeonholing either one of those users. Next, I was just gonna talk, and I'll go very briefly about this, the tree mitigation plan. We read the condition of approval recommended by city staff. We've actually gone out and started overlaying those areas that Tony requested us take a look at. What we've come up with so far is we have 117 trees that are located on the site, that are not located within the water quality resource area, not located within the building pad area, or right-of-way. Those trees range in size from six inches to 20 inches diameter breast height, with an average of approximately 11.5 inches. We're proposing to plant 229 trees as part of Phase One and Phase Two. Those are all two-inch caliber trees. And over 1,000 trees are gonna be planted over the life of the project. Just want to demonstrate we don't have a problem with this condition. You know, we plan on complying with it, and we'll bring that information forward at the time of construction documentation due. But we've done the baseline analysis, and it doesn't affect this. Well, don't want to get very down. So, parking at the North Park was another concern that came up, and discussion came about this evening. So we're talking about this area here as well. Again, we reviewed the city staff report, we took a look at that area, and we're looking at some different layouts for how we can actually accommodate that additional parking. We don't think that's gonna be a concern. You know, we agree with the issue that was raised, and we don't have a problem providing that. Another concern was raised in this general area here, there's some existing metal structures that are located within the Cove, and there's also some metal and wooden structures that are kind of higher up slope. And there was some question regarding how those structures are gonna be dealt with with development of the site. And the applicant's kind of approaching that in a two-faced approach. Basically, all of the metal structures that are located below the 18-feet mean C level, which is the ordinary high-water line, those structures will all remain in place until Phase Eight, when the in-water work activity occurs. The structures that are above that 18-feet mean C level will be removed as the grading activity occurs. One of the structures that's out there right now is a wooden structure, it's kind of an overhang. That's something the applicant's very interested in looking at to see if they can incorporate and utilize that as part of it. But at this point, until they actually get out and start looking around, they won't be able to know. And kind of, one of the last issues we talked about was the parking at the Kaiser Medical Kaiser's developed numerous facilities across the Northwest, and the request that we have for the five spaces per thousand stems from their previous experience, existing facilities in our market. Kaiser wants to ensure they have adequate parking for not only the folks that work there, but also people that need to go there to get services. They're concerned that the site, you know, when we take a look at the site, they're concerned that the site is isolated enough from existing transit facilities that folks who work there are not gonna opt to use those transit facilities until they're developed a higher ratio in the area. Currently, you have the, you know, transit facility, which is in your downtown, it's a pretty long distance to get from that facility to this area. So what we did is we provided you a memorandum that just kind of details, you know, why Kaiser's requesting that additional five per thousand as opposed to 3.33 per thousand. And we brought you some documentation from the International Traffic Engineers, Transportation Engineers Institute. It shows that there's a range for medical office building facilities from 1.38 to 8.9. And what they did is they basically took a look at 50 medical office buildings to kind of see what that aggregate range was. And as Tony noted, the vast majority of them fall within that four to five. And Kaiser's past experience, again, in the Portland market, is that in areas that aren't served adequately to transportation, they need those additional parks to make sure their employees and the folks patronizing on the site are accessible. With that, I will go ahead and answer any questions or concurrent questions, or we can just hold off until the summary.
Any questions? Commissioner Stein?
I have a couple of questions. I understood that there had been some air monitoring to determine whether or not there were odors coming from the water treatment plant upstream? Is that, am I correct or incorrect about that?
I'm a year old.
Okay. Has the project had any interactions with the Water Environmental Services component of the Tri-Cities sewage plant to, I guess, to work together on projects, or work together on connections, or work together on how that park might be enhanced by using some of the West property? Has anything gone on with that?
I'm gonna let Ed go ahead and answer. I know we've been in close coordination with them throughout this process, but definitely Ed has played a much more prominent role in that than I.
Yeah, I have Darrow with PPS. We discussed several things with Tri-City over the last three years. One of the first things is that we did have an additional building up here. When you look at these buildings that go across here, there's six of them. We did have an additional building that was right here, and we shared that with Tri-City, the overall master plan. We talked about how they were gonna improve their property, and we talked about architectural compatibility. They asked us to remove this building at this top area because they did a circumference around here, a circle, and said we wanted everything without, not to be within a 500-foot radius. That eliminated the one building, and we suggested, all right, if we and the city make that decision to create a park here, we would like to have some sort of a reciprocal program with you where this 10 acres here, which they have no plan on building on, as they told us, would in fact be left as an open space. That has yet to be put into documentation, but that was part of our negotiation. And we also talked to them about how they were gonna plant this area. We wanted to have screening, that would actually screen it out. We said that we would participate in that. We talked about the road that comes around, and how we would share in the cost of doing that road. And then we talked about their drawings. They shared their architectural lines with us. They didn't quite come out as compatible as we would have liked them to be, but they are acceptable. So we've had a long history of working with them.
And that dialogue continues, then?
Oh, yes.
Second question I have relates to some of the information that Ms. Kreshar shared with us tonight about the studies that were done, the test wells that were dug, and the contaminants that were found. How has that information been incorporated into your project design and planning?
Randy, do you want to go first?
Randy Tyler, within Portland, Oregon. We've been cognizant of the potential of different kinds of contaminants, and I think that the state outlined- that the state outlined in the prospective purchaser agreement, the steps that one goes through. And there are things like making sure that workers on site understand and recognize something if it is a potential problem and the specific, I think they have a list of things that they want you to do to be in compliance with that. Recently, as a part of the due diligence investigation of the medical office user, they had did some additional groundwork and found there were no contaminants either in the groundwater or in the soils. So we were delighted to have that information.
Does the project intend to do any, say, real-time monitoring or any monitoring into the future over the 10 years of the development effort on any of those test wells or any other test wells that you might deem appropriate to monitor?
Yes, there would be a monitoring program. There are wells in place now that can be used for monitoring. There will probably be some additional wells going in for monitoring and we'll keep track of that. The good news, our geologist said, is that there's quite a nice layer from the current surface down to the water table is sufficient to provide a huge amount of protection in the event there were anything nasty in the groundwater. The other thing is we're not using the groundwater for anything. We're not using it for potable water. We're not using it for irrigation. We're staying separate from it and that's the key.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lejeune.
I've got a question about the cut-fill concept of how the site works relative to the 75-foot height limit. So I saw in a simple section where we're cutting off the slope and I think essentially we're taking all that dirt and putting it up on top. Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. So is the 75 feet the height? Is it taken from the new grade that we establish or from the existing grade that's there?
I don't recall my answer. The architect was not here. But I would imagine it could have been from the new grade.
I believe that is.
For our definition, we measure it from the finished grade.
The new finished grade?
Yes.
So if somebody had a piece of property and they dumped a whole bunch of, even a single-family house, and they brought in yards and yards of dirt and they decided to put a house on top of that, which now makes that house extraordinarily higher than anything else, we would, that's acceptable from the new grade?
We measure building height from the finished grade. That's correct.
Finished new grade.
Correct.
Because that's, I've never heard of that before.
Neither have I.
There's a jurisdiction that measures it that way. They always measure it from existing grade. I've never heard of any jurisdiction that measures it that way. But if that's the way we measure it, then that answers my question.
Yep, that's the way we measure it.
It is typically beyond that. It has to do with the average grade of the corners of the building so that you get some base elevation from which to start.
Sure. I was just wondering, you know, are we basing it off this grade or are we basing it off this grade? And what I'm being told is it's off this grade. Okay. Is there any opportunity? I'm a little concerned still with the overall parking. The idea is to bring folks to this place and we've got it up to 28 stalls, but we've got two stalls per unit for the residential. Most people probably have two cars, so they'll use both those there. Visitor parking is someplace.
Yeah, there's some visitor parking near the entrance to the condominiums.
At each one?
Yes.
Was that all, okay, I didn't know that that was all visitor parking.
It's not all visitor parking because we like to do two parking spaces for each condominium. We like those to be covered. In this instance, we're not able to have all of that two to one ratio covered, so some of them will be outside amongst the guest parking.
Okay, so I guess my question is, by the time everybody parks in their unit and they have a visitor, you know, you have visitor parking and that fills that parking up and then there's overflow. Is there overflow from that and do they use those 28 spots? And now people in the city really can't get to the park. Is there an opportunity to provide more on-street parking?
What we have just.
Anywhere along here, you know, just to parallel park somewhere along the street and be able to, like I said last time, get a stroller out and make it easy.
There are some spaces along the street where there will be parking. But better than that, one of our other projects, we did reciprocal parking. This was actually at a Swigel Point. And we had different uses that, whose peak parking demands occur at different times. In that case, it was an office building, water sports center, marina, restaurant. And the peak demand for the restaurant was during the evenings and, you know, summertime. And we can do something similar here. We've had discussions with the medical office user and they're willing to entertain the idea, subject to working out, liability and clean up. They're willing to work with us on a reciprocal parking. That'll add a couple hundred parking spaces. So that'll go a long way to address the concerns about parking.
Yeah, because that's what I was actually getting at, this request for five per thousand on the medical. I like the idea of it. I like the idea of it personally because if we can structure an agreement with that user, that some of those stalls could be used for people in general.
Right.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, we just have to be done in such a way that it doesn't conflict with their need for parking. As long as that can be reasonably managed, it's a great way to go.
Okay. The next question, I'm not sure how we can show it or how you can explain it, but I'm trying to figure out along the residential units, what's public, what's private? Is the main floor of each of these units residential? So as I'm facing, as I'm facing the cove itself, those are residential units right at grade. Is that right? There's no commercial?
Well, with the exception of condominium units three and four, which are in the center.
There'll be just a small little bit of commercial in there.
It wouldn't be that whole floor of condominiums.
Right, it'd just be the corners.
Exactly.
And that's what I was getting at. And that's what I was hoping you'd say because, you know, when you guys showed some of the images from before, we have this long promenade that the public can get to and I wasn't sure if they were able to get up and around onto the upper courtyard or if that was private up there, but it's going to be public, that courtyard.
That's the intent.
Okay, great. That's terrific.
It will be privately owned. It'll be owned by the association of unit owners, but it'll be open to the public.
Yeah, yeah.
I have some other comments, but I'm going to wait right now.
Okay.
There were a couple of other points that we wanted to make, if this being appropriate.
Right, yeah, because I thought your presentation was done. That's why it's launched in all these conversations.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. We had made a request, well, backing up, one of the great principles of master plans is the idea that they can build in flexibility. And so that if conditions change, market factors change, the city will entertain some flexibility in terms of how that might be developed. More specifically, we would ask, we have asked in a request to Tony, that we have flexibility in terms of phasing. For instance, we have the general mixed-use building identified as phase seven, I think. And if the market is such that we'd like to move that up in terms of its timing, it could actually be developed in parallel with the first condominium buildings. And we would just like to make sure that that kind of flexibility and ability to respond to market conditions is indeed part of the approval. I don't believe there was a condition that said that, but I don't, on the other hand, it didn't say no. So we'd like to have some kind of assurance that we can have flexibility. And further, the condominium phases, there's three phases of condominium development. Each of those has two buildings, so we have a total of six condominium buildings. It's conceivable that a lender might say, you know, you really shouldn't bite off more than you could chew here. Let's do one of those buildings at a time instead of two of them. So that could be a sub-phase A and a sub-phase B. And we would just like to have an assurance that there's that kind of flexibility in this approval process.
Well, I don't want to speak for staff, but to me it makes sense that we offer people flexibility as long as it doesn't impact parking, you know, road development and things like that, which is why we're putting in the infrastructure first typically in these type things. So, you know, we can, if it needs to be specified, I'm sure there's something we can talk about. But I think it's important to have the flexibility specifically for the market conditions where we're at, where we are today. But on the other side, it's also important, I think, for the public amenity. And I think that's, you know, what we're interested in too, is how soon will that be there because that's going to be an important piece. And that was in phase one, if I understand correctly. So, you know, I would be less, I would be more concerned if you said, well, we're really not interested in doing that public amenity now until phase three. You know, I'd be more concerned about that flexibility as I would be, hey, we want to add more on phase two.
Right, okay. Was there?
There is a possibility. We did talk at one time with Tri-Cities about.
I'm sorry, we need to get you on the mic, sorry.
Ed Darryl again. We did talk with Tri-Cities about taking and doing some parking right here, which is still something that we'd like to pursue. I didn't bring that up. So that would be an opportunity. We actually had probably 30 or 40 parking spaces here at one time. It does create an issue because there is some fill material that isn't correct here. We'd have to go in and take it down probably 20 or 30 feet. It was a pretty expensive operation, but that is still a potential and it's an area that they do not plan on developing.
So I'm curious about, we brought this up before, but with Tri-Net having any discussion about access, it seems to me that, and I'm not sure who said it, but somebody said that that medical building is going to be somewhat cornered down in the corner and kind of away from any main thoroughfare. And it seems to me that there's, that I think it'd be a priority to have some access off of McLaughlin through the shopping center. Early on, because, you know, it seems as though, again, now in this economy, there are a lot of people riding the transit systems and as the transit system gets better and hopefully gets down to Oregon City, we'll be able to have, provide that service more and be able to walk to the medical facilities and the types of things that you've got there. And I think that that's a long eatur, if you're walking from the transit center from either way. And I just was wondering if there'd been any discussion with Tri-Net in shuttling or any of those types of discussions?
There hasn't been in my knowledge now.
Okay.
We have talked about doing an additional pedestrian access here and up the Firestone Road right here. So there will be pedestrian access that we will work out at this end. And then ultimately, as was requested, that as this develops formally with a, develop a detailed development plan, that the entity that's doing the medical facility will come in with a plan for a road area.
Well, as you know, and as you've probably heard more times than not, we really want to be more pedestrian friendly in this community. We're doing it on 99 and we're kind of bucking the system there. And I think we're going to be trying to do that even further up on McLaughlin if it's possible and we can work it out. I just think it makes sense to right now, it seems like this will be a great amenity, but you have to drive to get there. And I think Dan was kind of talking about having a vehicle to get there. It seems like the people of this community like to walk and it would be, it would be nice if there was a more efficient way to get down into the public amenity. And I don't know if that's something that we could look at at another point or, but I know there's a lot of people that use the trail now and they bike or walk down to that point. And I'm just looking at how long-term and how we're going to affect, you know, involvement into that medical center and the public amenity.
Well, this facility, the Oregon City Shopping Center is up for sale again, so there's a potential of that having some redevelopment. We actually brought it to two separate developers that we know. When we started the project out and say, how could we work out a program with them, they were not interested at the time, given where things are on the economy.
Sure. Yeah, it's a tough time.
Yes.
To be discussing this, but, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stein.
Yeah, I have one more that I forgot to ask. I was just curious about how the osprey and cormorant roosts were going to be accommodated in the plan.
We did a project called Tidewater Cove on the Columbia River in Vancouver and the gentleman that we bought that property from was not very environmentally attuned. He had a barge and tug company and he had a cluster of poles in which an osprey built a nest and he didn't know you had to get permits or anything to get rid of that, so he just wiped it out, unfortunately for the osprey. The city of Vancouver put in an artificial nest. They put in a pole out in the water and drove it in and put the basics of a nest up and the osprey went and finished it. And now there's usually a couple of young chicks there and people from the shore can see it, but it keeps it away from most of the predators by having it out in the water. We've talked about doing something like that at the cove near the entrance. I don't think we need to even disturb the existing osprey nest, but it'd be kind of fun to have another one because of the people that go around there and would enjoy seeing them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
I've got one more. It's dealing with, it's in the staff report on page 21 and it's dealing in variations in massing. And just going to read a little bit here. It says, horizontal masses shall not exceed height to width ratio of one to three without substantial variation in massing. That includes a change in height and projecting or recessed elements. If we get a full buildout here, you know, we have these six buildings along here, you know, we've seen, you know, these images here and we've seen building type A and B. And I actually at work kind of made a whole bunch of copies and sort of placed these all kind of in an elevation along here and set them about the right distance across and they end up being the same height. The best scenario for you would be full buildout, that you would get the full five floors for these things. In one sense, that accomplishes a lot for you, but on the other sense, the other hand, it really creates quite a, a pretty, you know, these are very long buildings. They're along the freeway, so they'll be easily seen and we have the same height. How do we, how do we, how do you deal with that? It may take care of itself where phase one ends up being this high, but the market isn't as good the second time around, so they're one story lower or two stories lower. But in my mind, the way that it's proposed right now, that aspect of it isn't being met with changes in height. And it plays back all into your FARs and all the rest of it, so could you address that?
I don't know if I've mentioned this to this group or not, but people, lots of times people are nervous about new development and lots of times the reason is because the architecture lacks character. So we try to figure out what constitutes character right from the beginning and then build those elements into the building. You'll notice these buildings have some interesting eyebrow features or some round windows or a variety of different things. We have changes in materials, starting with stone at the bottom and then changing as the building goes up and as many as four different colors, all compatible with each other. So we think we're ending up with a design and completed design that's very pleasing and very compatible. There will be changes in materials and changes in colors from building to building and there will be a lot of vegetation that will soften that. In addition, we take notches out of the end of a building to provide some variation in terms of vertical relief as you go along the building.
There is a lot of articulation in the, as you look at the mass of the building, it's coming out and going in, it's doing a lot of moving. And I think when you look at it on a one-dimensional plane or two-dimensional plane like you're drawing, you don't get a feel for it. But we always require our architects to put it into a sketch-up program. And we look at it based on all the elevations. We spin it around, we play with it, we change it. And I think that if you have some. And I think that if you have some concerns about that, we can actually get you a disc on that sketch-up, and you can take a look at it.
Well, I mean, the height, it still goes back to the sentence where it says the height needs to be substantially changed. And it's not. It's the same height all the way across. Now, it breaks down in different spots, but really, if I drove by, those buildings are all the same height.
I think that when you drive by from the freeway looking down, you might get that feel. But when you're walking the path, or if you're down driving at the lower level, there's going to be a lot of planting materials that'll write that up substantially, and I think that the color. So if you're walking the pathway, there'll be a number of plant materials out there. And as you drive up to the building, there will be a lot of plant materials. So from a human scale versus being up at 72 feet high, which is where the freeway is, and driving and looking down, you will get a feel that the buildings are massive, because you're not right on top of them. You can't see that change, it'll just be a block of buildings. But when you're down in the project, I think it'll read very, very good.
But it still doesn't address the height for me. I mean, the height is the height, I mean, that's what it is. Believe me, when you drive down the freeway and see these buildings, you'll be looking up at them just because of the way the grades are. So you're really just going to see six long buildings, very similar, but really the same height. So I'm not sure that that satisfies the answer for me. Let me ask you a question about the aesthetics itself. So the solution that you have right now, and the only reason I want to start, that I want to bring this up, is because if this gets passed here, if it gets passed, and it moves to the next level, my understanding is that the buildings themselves will be through a Type 2 process, is that right? Which means it doesn't go through the planning commission, it goes through the city, it'll go up to people within 300 feet for comment, but staff still makes the decision on the buildings themselves, is that right?
That's correct.
So let me, so once it leaves here, you know, these solutions, if it leaves here, the way that it's depicted right now, is that the aesthetic direction that you're heading with this project? Or is the, I'm just not sure exactly where you're at with the actual aesthetics.
Yes, the current design, we went through, I think, three architectural firms. The first couple were just totally unacceptable. The person that you had mentioned, Greg Mitchell with LRS, is a very, very capable and very competent architect. And we really focused on utilizing his efforts, and we think that he has done a nice job. And it would be our intent to take those plans as they are and use those as the primary base for the final drawings.
And again, you know, with my earlier description of my potential bias here, I'm walking kind of right into trouble with my friend. For me, the aesthetics of the building, and again, it's only because it's going to leave here, and I want to discuss this now. With such a prominent site for the city of Oregon City, it's such a gateway on 205. Doesn't matter what direction you come from, we'll see this project. Gateway from 99E, we'll look over to the left, we'll see this huge project, just its massive, just its scope of the work. And I'm looking at the architecture, and I don't see why this is in Oregon City. It also reminds me, you showed us some past projects that you guys have done, that I know that you have an affinity towards this style. But I don't understand what this has to do with Oregon City. We have this rich history that you can draw from, if you wanted to go in a historical sense. It's not in a historic district, but you can draw on it. We saw a proposal for the project across the freeway where they did a lot of research on the history of Oregon City. That's why we're all here, is what's happened here. And there's no sense of belonging to this site at all for me with this architecture. So you can go in a historical sense. The other thing you can do, if you wanted to pick up something a little bit different, maybe it's more of a northwest sort of feel. And take our climate, for instance. Okay, it wouldn't be a stucco building. If we're in the desert, this would be a stucco sort of version. But we're here in the Pacific Northwest, and why wouldn't we draw on themes that might be relevant to our climate? So there's two, like, it's not that there could be one direction. I'm just looking for a direction that is more an icon for us as opposed to what we have, honestly. And I feel, of all the things that I've heard, I feel the strongest about just the aesthetics about this. And again, it's because it's going to leave this body if it gets approved. And I'm not there at all with the architecture at all, with the aesthetics of it. In Section 17.62.06, it's under Building Structures, which is under, I can't remember, 1762, what that is. Building structures shall be complementary to the surrounding area as provided by the design guidelines adopted by the city commission. All exterior surface shall present a finished appearance. In historic areas or where development could have a significant visual impact, the review authority may request the advisory opinions of appropriate experts designated by the city manager from the design fields of architecture, landscaping, urban planning. And I guess that's an avenue that we could recommend as it goes through the next steps. But I was kind of hoping that we could kind of work it out here personally. I mean, that's how I feel about it. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it.
Well, I certainly would like to find out whether or not the applicants are interested in maybe trying to understand what it is you're talking about in terms of the aesthetic. One thing that I would like to pick up on that you'd mentioned was the historical context and where is this in Oregon City? And I recall that when we reviewed the county's application at the water treatment plant, they had a section in their application about the historical resource of the Cove. And in the application that we're looking at here, basically goes by the book that there are no Gold 5 resources. Maybe not any Gold 5 resources, but a rich, rich history of, you know, Native Americans were here. There was an old paper mill on this site at one time before the Creole soap plant and the cement plants were there. So I think you've raised the historical context issue, I think, is something that I can get my hands around. I'm not so certain that I understand what the massing aesthetic means to a project architect or a building architect. But I would like to hear from the applicants as to whether they're understanding what you're saying and they have any flexibility about working with staff to provide some variation in the massing and the elevations.
I don't think there's any question that we can do that. We have spent a lot of time with those particular buildings. We did have a lower building on each end of the project, so that we kind of stepped up. We did pop in some lofts that aren't really actually showing on that right now in the center part of the two middle units within the building. So that roof goes up a little bit higher than is actually shown. That was the intent, to kind of break that horizontal line in the roof line. The dropping down of the ends, I think that you'll see that on some of those buildings, we dropped the ends down. That was all with that intent, but they aren't to a CD level now, and we could certainly revisit that. I know exactly what you're talking about. They are large buildings, there isn't any question. And what we were trying to do to make that disappear was use a combination of colors and going in and out horizontally so that as you're going by the buildings, you would see the shadowing, you would see the things that are going on. So it's, the problem that you get into is to have enough units that actually work economically on the site. So we had been told or asked at one time, "Well, why don't you go eight stories in the middle and drop the ends down?" There are some economies in building vertical like that that create conflicts also. So our intent was to get a number of units that worked financially to be feasible and to create the aesthetics. So it's something we can still play with, without any question. And I think that there are a number of firms out there that have that capacity. It is not an absolute lock-in at this point, so it's really a matter of working with them. And I think you have an architectural background, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that's, therein comes the basis for the questioning. It's valid. The thing that I, you know, I think a couple of you were at the urban renewal hearing when Dave Lewin addressed the old-town approach in what was here and how the connectivity of the roads and being able to get to a downtown area, which is a downtown area. It really doesn't state that you need to pull that out to this independent area for architecture and things of that nature. And he articulated that a lot better than I can. But the idea was that it is a very unique area, and you are trying to put as many units there that work feasibly and to keep the visual corridor working. So that's something that we can address, we're more than happy to do that.
Okay. And we did look at a lot of the design elements in existing houses, particularly some of the Victorian period houses on the hill and down around Seventh Street, and picked, you know, common design elements, steep pitched roofs, different window shapes, a variety of exterior materials, shingles in some areas and transitioning. You might see a Victorian house that has batt and board on the bottom and then vertical and then shingles toward the peak. And we've incorporated actually a lot of those kinds of ideas into the design of the buildings.
Okay. I'll weigh in. I think you tend, in certain situations, you tend to risk by trying to look too historic. You tend to make it look negative and foolish. And we've had it happen in Oregon City where, you know, people have come in and tried to build something that is not historic in a historic neighborhood, and it looks like they tried to build something non-historic. And that's the last thing I would want to do here, because this is not, I mean, while it is a site, you know, if you really look at historic, it was farm way back when. So, you know, if we go back to that, there was a little wood shed out there probably. So, you know, really, I'm less concerned about the historic piece. I mean, I understand Dan's concept on the massing, and I think that makes sense. And I agree with what you're saying, is you can do that in different ways and meandering facades and things like that. And I think that makes a lot of sense. But it's a big building. I mean, it's going to be a difficult challenge. But I think, I like a lot of the architectural design that you've done with it. I would just caution you, as you go through this discussion, to not try and make it look historic, because there's a lot of people in this room, I know, that understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I know what you're saying. I'm not saying copy the history of our city, just understand it and apply it here properly and sensitively. And I just don't think that, there's a number of elements here that I have no idea how they got here. So that's where I'm at with it.
One of the things we would like to do is, as you go up and down the pathway here, is to do a historical research that would have a combination of statements, little kiosk areas that talk about the water, what you can do in it, the birds, the nesting, and have a, you know, kind of a historical program that goes as you walk along, that you can stop and kind of, you know, visit with or sit and look and read it. So that hasn't been laid out, and we've discussed it, but it hasn't been designed in the program. We will put that into the program.
Great. Okay. Anything else from the applicant at this point? I'm sure there'll be more questions as we go through this. I think it would be a good time to take a break, if you wouldn't mind. We could do a, what, five-minute break, five, 10 minutes at the most? And we'll give everybody a chance to stretch, and then we'll get going on the public side of this. Thank you very much. ... that we had been talking about. And then those interested in support, then neither, and then opposed. And that's the process we'll go through. We typically allow three minutes for your presentation unless you are presenting for a recognized neighborhood association. And at that point, you can take 10 minutes. We'll give you a little extra time because you've got some things to cover. So at this time, if you'll introduce yourself and tell us your city of residence, please.
Okay, good evening, Chair Powell and Planning Commission. My name is Gail Curtis. I'm a senior planner with ODOT, and to my right is Marty Genzwald, also with ODOT, a registered civil engineer. And what I'd like to do is give a little bit of background to the work that we have been doing, working with the staff and the applicant and the applicant's representatives, and then talk specifically about five mitigation items. The bottom line is, we support the proposal with the mitigation that we've outlined. I've just submitted or distributed a January 26 letter. It is substantially similar to our January 16 letter that's in the record. What is different is we have detailed the proportional share of the applicant's responsibility. And in fact, it's $3,200 less than the January 16 letter. Essentially, the mitigation is $153,000. And so we'd like to go over that. But before I do that, I would like to recognize that we've made some progress working with staff, but there's more progress that needs to be made. And we're really looking to you to help define this struggle of safety. Safety is the number-one objective of ODOT. That's what we do, we're experts in it. It's a responsibility that we take very seriously. And we have expert engineers that spend their time defining what is and is not safe. And we have that information for you today and also reflected in the letter that we've just distributed. And I think what's happened, the discussion that we've had to date with staff largely, is that they are overlooking or, they're overlooking the existing conditions. We recognize that the facility, 99 largely, is not up to standard. There are existing problems, and then the developers contributing to a portion of those. But under your code, we need to look at the existing conditions. And let me just read to you, the approval criteria, Section 17.65.050 calls for the development proposal to be consistent with the purpose statement of the master plan. And in that purpose statement, it says, "To facilitate this, the master planning process, the master plan process is structured to allow an applicant to address the larger development issues, such as adequacy of infrastructure and transportation capacity, and reserve capacity of the infrastructure and transportation system before expenditure of final design costs." So clearly, the adequacy of the transportation system and how much of the reserve capacity even is on the table. Under subsection 050, subsection 2, as I'm going to read, this is another piece of approval criteria that we are all subject to. "The transportation system has sufficient capacity based on the city's level of service standards and is capable of safely supporting the development proposed in addition to the existing and planned uses in the area or will be made adequate by the time each phase of development is completed." Okay, so clearly, safety is something that we need to make sure is addressed. So let me, with that, go over the mitigation that we've outlined. And John Replinger did a good introduction to that. The first item, well, let me just line out the ones I want to address, and then we can go through them one by one. A traffic separator in 99E to deal with the frontage road situation, also sometimes referred to as the Firestone driveway. So a median to eliminate the left turns. Reconfiguration of that entrance into the shopping center and access to Main Street. Three, restriping of 99E to allow the side-by-side left turns. And then we want to discuss Agnes. And then the fifth item ... And then the fifth item, we did recommend some mitigation associated with Dune Drive and providing a right turn lane in to both the frontage road and the, a right turn in front of the McDonald's to take a right, to go southbound. And we recognize and we acknowledge the staff's comments about it being difficult to obtain that right-of-way. So we're willing to take those off the table, given that we can achieve these other items of mitigation. So let's go back to the raised median. It needs to be 475 feet long. It is to address 170 left turns into the shopping center that are projected to occur in 2012 without the development. With the development, there will be 30 additional left turns in both the AM and the PM. 30, 60 additional over the course of the day. The estimated cost is $35,000. We would like the developer to contribute $28,000 towards that improvement. We're willing to make the improvement, but want the funds to carry it out. Secondly, is the reconfiguration of the frontage road. And there's an illustration on page, let's see, I didn't note here, in your packet there. Page six of 10, which is the second letter, so probably about 15 pages in, there's a diagram of what we have in mind. And staff has recommended that the applicant contribute $20,000. The cost of the project is $90,000. And I think I'm actually at fault for creating some confusion about that, the price tag. And I planted the seed that $20,000 might work. I was in error. The staff had, the staff that I work with had told me the $90,000 figure. I hadn't updated my records. I reflected 40. I was hopeful that we could get 20 from state money to contribute, hence your $20,000. That's where the $20,000 came from. But I was mistaken about that and it's $90,000. And we are suggesting that the applicant slash city, the urban renewal district, be responsible for that improvement. The third and last mitigation is the side-by-side left turn that can simply be done by restriping. This is to address the southbound, the access on 99, the southbound movement to the I-205 southbound ramp terminal. The cost of this project is $35,000. If it is done as a part of another public project, if we are delayed on this, the price could go up to $640,000 because of removal of signal terminals and...
Basically, Marty Genzewald, I'm the region access management engineer. For the southbound ramp terminals, a big cost item is actually repaving the highway so as to obliterate the existing striping because with the proposed side-by-side left turn lanes, the striping gets moved. So our standard operating procedure is to, you know, grind an inlay or overlay the highway in that section. So there is no trace of the existing striping and nobody, nothing that people can get confused about when they see the existing striping and the remnants of what was.
And a little more perspective on the need for this improvement. The left turn storage is currently 200 feet long. However, the queuing is 400 feet long in the morning and 450 feet long in the PM. And this, excuse me, excuse me, I misspoke. The AM, if you want to give it, Marty, it's 400.
400 feet in the AM currently with the project. It goes to 450. The PM, it's 650 feet long and it goes to 700 with the cove's traffic. And these distances are basically exceeding the distance between the ramp terminals and Dune's Drive. So you have, not only have queues backing up into the through lanes, in between those two intersections, you have queues that are extending back through the intersection. So we're not looking for the cove to solve that problem. We're just looking for them to help mitigate their impacts and make things a little bit better.
So that brings us up to the $153,000 of improvements. Once again, we think they're reasonable, absolutely needed, and quite modest relative to the overall improvements that are needed in this corridor. And just want to reiterate that Agnes cannot be connected to Washington to have access to the interchange. The, that interchange is over capacity now and we have some concerns about the safety of that connection. And there's more information in the letter. And if you have any questions about that, we've been, we've made our position clear on this dating back to 1997. You have a letter, a copy of letter, a letter from ODOT in your packet as well as a letter that we provided when the Tri-Cities master plan was approved this last year. We made it clear that, of our intentions, that the, that there would not be a connection for the sewage treatment plant and they would need to make accommodations to not use this access. And I had a conversation with the project manager or the manager responsible for the treatment plant and he, Ted Hazel, said he understood that that interchange cannot tolerate any additional traffic and was okay essentially with our proposal. So that's, that's been reflected in the city records for some time now. So that concludes our presentation. And we're happy to take questions or talk more about the safety issues, but we really are looking for you to direct staff to accept the conditions of approval that we've laid out. They're on page five of your, of the January 26th letter before you.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions, just to confirm what you just said there about Agnes. So you do have a specific issue with the, the way it's proposed with a one, with a southbound one-way back into the cove as opposed to northbound, southbound, coming off Agnes?
Right. We recognize and support the city's concerns regarding the traffic coming, the potential impacts of traffic coming out of the cove. But we also have concerns about the traffic coming into the cove. According to the traffic study, about 20 to 25% of the traffic the cove generates is going to be coming southbound on I-205 to reach the cove. And basically, their traffic study assumed none of that traffic, all that traffic would bypass the 213 interchange, you know, go past the site to 99E and then backtrack into the site. We're not comfortable with that assumption. And the main problem is, can we, can we get to the Agnes?
Well, that's being brought up. I want to make clear that we support the local transportation system plan and the connection of Agnes to the Gladstone Bridge. And hopefully, we'll have vehicular movement to provide for that redundant system and access from Gladstone into the regional center.
Basically, one of our concerns is the short distance that you have for the southbound off-ramp. As you come around the loop, ah, I wasn't sure how to use the, as you, as you come around the loop here, there's a ramp that splits off for traffic that is coming southbound and wants to go basically northbound on Washington Street. Traffic study indicates that that movement is going to have a poor level of service because of the heavy northbound to southbound on-ramp movement, you know, similar to the delays that are, would be experienced by someone coming southbound because both those movements have stop signs or stop controlled. And the thing is that, hey, it's, traffic doing this would experience a lot of delays so they could take, may be encouraged to take a chance, try to get through a gap that isn't big enough for them and cause accidents. Or the fact that there aren't many gaps for them would cause, and the potential increase in traffic due to the size of the cove's traffic generation could cause that queue to back up into the free-flowing through lanes on the loop ramp. Neither of those are acceptable to us from a safety or operational standpoint. There are also legal issues involved, or at least regulatory issues involved. Currently, Agnes Street is classified by us and by Clackamas County as a private street. It is, we bought this section basically along the sewage treatment plant. We built that section when we built 205 and turned it over to the county. Beyond that, the, there was a road that was used back in the sand and gravel days or whatever, but it's on privately owned land, or at least it's not public right-of-way. And so, and for the last decade or so, it's been blocked off, you know, barricaded off due to its poor condition. So that's, that's classic, we would classify that also based on our regulations for access management as a private road, in which case the proposed development of the cove would represent a change of use which would require an access permit. And because the Agnes Street connection to Washington Street, which is within our jurisdiction and within the interchange management area, we can't accept or can't approve an application for a permit without meeting our access spacing standards, which this does not, or closing other accesses, which there aren't any. So both from the safety and from the regulatory perspective, we cannot support creating the, creating a vehicular access from Washington Street to the cove. Now, we're willing to consider an emergency access or providing for bikes and beds through that section because that wouldn't run into the same regulatory or safety issues. But we cannot accept regular vehicular access between the interchange and the cove via Agnes. So the cove to access Agnes and the Agnes to access Washington and Washington to connect to Gladstone. But at that time, we would sever the connection of Washington Street to the interchange.
Okay. And next, excuse me, next question will be if the, if the jug handle theory or goes through, is this an issue? Would this continue to be an issue?
Yes.
Because, some reason?
Some of the same reasons. Also, when we were dealing with the proposed rivers development, we, concerns were expressed by the state traffic, you know, as part of the rivers development, they were proposing to eliminate this left turn here and this left turn here. Due in part to the fact that those are, well, they were eliminating this left turn because it's very difficult to make with free-flowing traffic going both directions. They were recommending doing away with this left turn as part, or the applicant was, I should say. Because with, as part of the project, they were going to be providing, with the lane configuration, they were going to be putting between the ramp terminals and Washington Street. It would shift the through lane, northbound through lane over into the area where the southbound left turn pocket is. So they're proposing to eliminate that southbound left turn movement. But that raised some concerns with the state traffic engineer and the federal highway administration because, you know, interchangers are supposed to provide access to whoever they're connected to. And they were concerned about causing, requiring traffic to go out of direction as significant of traffic. And the only thing that moderated their concerns with our, was our ability to tell them, well, not much traffic does that.
Well, that's something I'd like to look at a little further. Let me ask you another question while we've got you here. So assuming this funding is available to this $153,000 in the improvements, what's the timeframe and are you funded enough that you're able to do that within the, or is it, are you, are you funded for it so that it could be done in a timely manner? Or is, or is this something that would go over the period of our, of the developer's project of how many years?
The way we've discussed it to date is that it would occur prior to the issuance of a building permit. You know, it would follow the site preparation, that the work would be done prior to the issuance of a building permit. And actually, we could discuss occupancy, but it seemed to us, just from an administrative point of view, it's easier to handle things at the building permit stage rather than the occupant stage, occupancy stage. And in terms of our funds, we're optimistic that we can bring our portion within this, the biennium that we're operating in.
The question that always comes up is, you know, building the infrastructure first and, you know, build it and they will come. You know, for a developer who's planning a long-term project, putting in that infrastructure now, even though it won't be needed for maybe five years, full build-out, I just wonder if there's, if there's a way to approach that over a period of time as opposed to upfront with the building, have the building permit stage?
We're willing to, to work that out. Part of the condition in here suggests that we would develop a cooperative agreement and that that would be done within three months so we know whether we can get this restriping project done sooner rather than later. And actually, we're suggesting if we can't get it done, then the price tag goes up. So I think we all have a big incentive to get it done sooner, the $35,000 cost or the $28,000 to the developer. So, you know, if there's some ideas about staging it so the money flow works better for the city or for the developer, we're open to that discussion.
Well, you're, we're asking for $90,000 out of our urban renewal. I'm sure that's going to be an issue, you know, with the, with the citizens of this community. So I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be able to put anybody in a position that this is going to be required for this application to go through. I think it's something that needs to be discussed. And I think that's something that we can talk about over a period of time. And again, I also want to look at the, I'd be interested in looking at the, you saw the accident data that we saw, that turn, the way the lights are structured, that turn into the, to the, what'd you call it, the?
Firestone alley.
Or a frontage road.
Whatever. Frontage road. That, we've only had three accidents in how many years, and it seems as though that could, that may not necessarily have to be the high priority deal. It might be the striping has to come first, and then we look at that, developing that later as more, as more people start to use that, or, or as it makes more sense. And then, the other question I have, and maybe Nancy can answer it, is, is any of this in our, in that metro money, is any of this project within that, that, that space so that we could tie that into the program somehow?
Well, we have a, a concept plan for the Phase II McLaughlin Boulevard project, and I, I can see where some of the recommendations that are being made could conflict with past planning work that we've done, especially the side-by-side left turn lanes. And what in the, in fact, they do is add more lanes to the highway, which we're trying to make more pedestrian friendly. So, there are some conflicts, and I have a concern that there's, that's going to impede the progress of our Phase II project, or it could take up a whole bunch more planning time and analysis time, which, you know, if we, we have to decide if that's something the city wants to pursue or not.
Right. Well, as you said, it sounds like there's more work needs to be done on this.
Well, let me, let me just say, the side-by-side left turns are, one thing that makes it possible, we, we were not proposing that the side-by-side right, left turns would require any widening of the existing roadway. We're taking advantage of the fact that the express lane is being taken out and that the express lane had additional width on either side of the barrier that defined it to make some of these lane changes, shift the lanes around in order to create the side-by-side left turns and still maintain three southbound through lanes and three northbound through lanes. So we're not, we're not cha, like I said, we're not changing the width of the roadway. And if you go with the, if you're working towards a future dual left turn lane onto the southbound off-ramp, which, again, we haven't, haven't yet determined that that's a viable option from a, just a fiscal constraints type layout type thing, because vehicles have to be able to make simultaneous turns, trucks and cars side-by-side have to be able to make that turn onto the ramp and then go into a loop ramp, go in the other direction, merge together before they get onto the main line. And it's a very tight area to try to make all that work. So, the side-by-side left turns are not incompatible with the dual left turns if they become feasible because you either take, have one left turn, well, yeah, sorry, if you can see this. Right now, we have basically end-to-end left turns, yeah, kind of like that. With the striping changes, we would have side-by-side left turns. And one option for creating the dual left turns is to revise the side-by-side left turns to create a second left turn lane in the same area that you currently have a southbound left turn lane. So, if you went with the, if you wanted to require, or if you wanted to keep a full-length northbound left turn lane, you'd have to widen the highway and that gets real expensive. But we'd have to determine if that's necessary from a geometric or traffic operations standpoint. We haven't done that yet. But anyway, my point is that it's, the side-by-side is not incompatible with the future dual left turn lanes, so it shouldn't be held against it, I guess.
Okay, I understand. Mr. Stone?
I want to understand the relationship between, I can't recall the technical term that you use to describe that intersection. It's, it's a, what, how does the department refer to it?
Overcapacity.
It's a zone, you had, you had some kind of a zone?
SPO.
Interchange management area.
Interchange management area.
Right.
Okay, so, I want to understand, understand what that is. Can you draw a circle around it on this, on this map, or is it described in terms of, of some distance measured from some point?
Basically, according to our, it's defined by our access spacing standards for interchanges. And the first full access at any interchange is supposed to be a quarter mile from the closest ramp terminal.
How many exceptions to that rule are there on I-205 between, say, I-84 and the bridge over the Willamette River?
A lot.
Okay. Are there variances in attaining a permit from assuming, assuming that there is a change in the use of the Agnes Road, to some other use, are there?
Not, not in this case.
Are there ever? Are there ever variances?
There's highway.
Like I said, you can approve it if there are, you can approve it if the, you can approve it if the access meets the spacing standard, or if there are other driveways that could be closed. What really brings it to a head is that, for one thing, there, there is no permit for the existing Agnes Street, even though we constructed it.
There were a lot of things done when I-205 was built that weren't to the advantage of the city.
But in, in the same token, Interstate 205 is our most recent state investment in an interstate system, and it, along with I-5 and I-84, are our most important investments in the state, and we want to preserve the function of these interstates so we can have a robust economy. And for that reason, it's really protecting our investment. There's highway plan policy that suggests that we start looking at removing access from the interchanges, and this means removing interchanges. And this is a policy that the Oregon Transportation Commission has recently developed. The problem's that serious.
Is it, I'm just curious about whether or not it makes sense to put the burden of those problems that have been a long time in the making on, on this development?
We don't want the development to exacerbate the situation.
Okay, so you're talking about the, I think 10 vehicles is what the model shows. 10 vehicles in the, in the AM peak.
Again, we don't, for one thing, we don't agree with that assumption.
25% of the traffic going to the Cove is coming from, is northbound to southbound, going by here. 25% of the trips.
Thank you.
So 10, we, so that's why we don't support it.
Okay. Did you offer alternative models to, to be used in the transportation impact analysis? I didn't see that. I saw, I saw a bubble diagram that showed me how many cars were expected to turn in a specific direction.
Those were based on the Kedden-Sultons' traffic study.
Right, and did you offer alternative numbers?
At that location, we agreed, or we thought the assumption was reasonable.
Okay, it was a reasonable assumption. The 10, the 10 cars were a reasonable assumption at that point?
That wasn't where the 10 cars were noted in the, in our submittal. The numbers that we had in the submittal were in regards to the Frontage Road access to 99E.
We've literally put hundreds of staff hours into this effort, and we're willing to put some more because we, we feel like we're pretty close.
Well, it's very complicated, and, and it's, I think the, I think that when we looked at the Tri-Cities proposal, the application, we saw some documentation from you all that was at odds with documentation that the city had, and it sounds like those, those conflicts are still not resolved in, in terms of what Agnes Street is.
We're clear on our, our position.
I think the city is too.
Well, we're, we're both trying to deal within the regulations that we both have to follow. You know, we, we have ORF 734 Division 51, you know, you guys have your land use codes. But the thing is that, you know, Washington, our jurisdiction goes up to and includes the intersection of Washington at Agnes Street, so Agnes is considered an access to our facility. And so, we have to deal with that access when there's proposed development that's proposing to use it in accordance with our regulations.
Right. Well, thank you. I think we all want the best outcome for everybody involved, so thanks for taking all the time and, and helping to work the problems.
I appreciate your, your being here. In a, in the ideal world, you would like to basically have Washington stop at that loop, is that correct? Yeah, I mean, it would.
Yeah.
If people out there had another access other than to come on to the Washington there.
Yeah, the, the thing is that the, this is a very unique interchange. It's almost like a freeway-to-freeway type interchange. You know, the fact that there are no traffic signals at the ramp terminals is unique, given, and the traffic volumes that we're dealing with here are unique.
Well, I guess I was getting at is if you, essentially, you would like to stop that, the traffic and not have them go north on Washington, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. That's, that's what, again, I thought someone was leading that way, that Agnes could have been that access.
I thought I had read that the jug hand, if the jug handle were implemented, that, that the route that a, that a, a southbound 205 traveler would take to go, to go, I believe it's north on Washington, would be through the jug handle, that they would turn right, go across the freeway, turn right on Washington, go back underneath 213, back around over Clackamas River Drive, then turn right back onto 213 and get across to, to Washington Street, is that correct?
Yeah.
And essentially, as you noted, they're using the facility twice, adding that additional traffic.
Again, you know, we are supportive of the future extension of Agnes Street, or the re-establishment of the vehicular access across the Clackamas River into Gladstone. And then that coming down, connecting to Agnes Street, and then going to, connecting to Main Street and to 99E to provide the collector status that, you know, your TSP provides for. I know that the city, from what city staff has said, that the city of Gladstone isn't too excited about the re-establishing the connection across the Clackamas River. But I, but I would guess that a big part of the reason for that reluctance is the fact that you're, it also is assuming connection to Oregon 213. Right now, this northbound on-ramp is overcapacity in the AM peak. You know, more traffic is getting onto that ramp than can fit. And with the rivers development, you're going to end up with a similar situation in the PM peak. We tried putting in a three-lane on-ramp to accommodate that traffic, but we can only run it for about 15 minutes in the morning before it gets overloaded and we have to shut it down. If you, under those conditions, if you maintain this connection between the interchange and re-establish the connection to Gladstone, there's going to be a bunch of traffic that will get into the inside lane on 213 and just bypass this on-ramp, go up to Gladstone, get on there. So you'll gum up bellworks at the Gladstone interchange. But if, but if that connection were severed, then it would just be basically local traffic, people getting from Gladstone to go to the Oregon City Shopping Center and not have to get onto 205 or 99E at all.
I guess that's what I was kind of alluding to, that might be a solution, but I'm, I'm not the engineer, so I think that's something that's going to have to be worked out.
And, and we're eager to work with the city on these issues.
Could you explain the 70%, mitigation? I'm not real clear on why a development is paying for 70% of a mitigation that's obviously about 95% existing.
Okay, we were, you know, trying to, trying to work with the city. We were patterning that after the mitigation or the expense, the proportionality that was basis that was used on the red soils development in Oregon City.
Yeah, I read that.
When they were, you know, when they were doing their master plan, you know, they were, we were anticipating, you know, just a ton of traffic, you know, coming from the site, going down 213 and into, to 205. And the way, we didn't have a specific mitigation identified, I don't believe, but we were trying to figure out how the red soils could contribute a proportional amount to whatever improvements are needed on 213, and the basis was the amount of traffic they generated, the proportion was based on the amount of traffic they generated versus the amount of traffic that was going to be generated by them plus the background traffic. In other words, the existing and future traffic volumes. The, the growth in the traffic between the current time and the master plan timeframe that wasn't attributed to the red soils.
I don't follow that, but that's okay. It just doesn't seem.
Okay, the, the amount of traffic that they were going to generate divided by the total amount of traffic volume change that was expected to occur between the study year, the existing and the master plan year. And basically, we used the data from the Kelson Traffic Study to establish those percentages.
So you're saying that it was the same?
Same process.
Same methodology.
Same process.
Same methodology.
Percent?
No.
So?
Because you're dealing with different traffic volumes and different background growth amounts.
So you're grabbing, I'm sorry, that you're grabbing the 70% from the red soils and applying?
No, we're, we're just, just the methodology.
The methodology, so you did have different statistics and you came out with the same percent as?
We, I don't know if it was the same percent. I don't know what the percent what, that you guys came up with was for red soils, but we're just telling you that.
I don't know.
Based on this traffic study.
Okay, so this is based on?
A methodology that the city has previously used.
Right, and used the data for down on 205.
And that's why we thought it would be an effective and acceptable method.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. We appreciate your comments, and we've entered this into, it'll be entered as exhibit J.
And if I may just also add, if there is an opportunity to extend the hearing, keep the record open, to continue to resolve the timing of some of these improvements, we'd be happy to make that formal request, if that would be helpful, assuming the planning commission can direct the staff.
Okay, thank you, Gal, appreciate it. Okay, next, we have Don Vedder. Next, we have Don Vedder. Let me, let me, I'll say that louder, Don Vedder. Okay, spill your guts in three minutes.
Don Vedder, Oregon City. And I'm old, and old people kind of most time resist change. And when I was born in Oregon City and raised in Gladstone and walked across the streetcar bridge and picked hops, and I thought if I could ever live, get long enough to get a job as wire-down man in the hop yard, well, I'd be there. As I understand, they do it in machines now, so I guess I can.
Still do it.
I, no, I, I can give up the hopes of being a wire-down man and that hops come back, so I guess I'm here to say I'm in support of the application. I represent the property owner that had the glacier site, and I also represent the Danielsons who own property across the Clackamas River, and their concern is that when they dredge that bar, that material don't get placed so that the river changes and erodes their property. I'm talking to Nancy, they really haven't resolved that, so I can't, you know, I'm sure she will look after it so it doesn't erode. And I'm in favor of the application.
All right, Don. Thank you very much. All right, next, Amber Holbeck.
Thank you, Chair Powell and Planning Commission. The chamber has since 2006 been in support of this effort to create the Cove property development. Currently, the property is certainly doing very little for Oregon City in any economic way or aesthetic way, quite frankly, or environmentally. Pacific Property Search has, was carefully selected by the city. They have a proven track record of success with these waterside developments. They have sought and included and altered their plans to take into consideration the concerns of the public. This is an opportunity for improvement, to improve this blighted land, to locate a jobs-creating, patient-visiting kind of a medical center here, create real reinvestment in our community, to provide a clear connection to Main Street, which is already on the move due to the Main Street Oregon City program, and to provide a reinvigoration, I think, for the Oregon City Shopping Center. It's time that we approve this plan. There's been a great deal of effort and time and expertise that has gone into this, and Oregon City is ripe for this opportunity. The chamber urges you to pass this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, next, Jerry Herman.
Hello, I'm Jerry Herman. I live in unincorporated Redland area, which is nearby. The discussion I wanted to really focus in on tonight, my discussion, I wanted to focus in on the aspect of what is the characteristics of the degraded repairing corridor. You have a repairing corridor that's very much intact. You have upland areas that are very much industrial in character. And I, from when I first met these gentlemen, I took a whole bunch of people, including some of your city commissioners, down to meet them at their site, talked about the interface, but Water Environmental Services looked at Oswego Point, which was a cement plant, and looked at the fact that they retained most of the repairing corridor intact, even creating snags and other features, which ultimately, Fort Hills Park, 38 acres that Lake Oswego just built, created more habitat to replicate what they done. I guess there's a little misinformation, I think, being expressed here that the environment is not healthy. The environment is very healthy there because there's a repairing habitat intact. My goal was to try to get more retention of the trees, either in their standing life condition or in their death, because I think they have some value, those that have to come down, in providing habitat within the cove, in the water, on the banks, and other areas where the downed woody material or standing snags could be created. I know what they did in Oswego Point, it is a witness, and Lake Oswego liked it so well that they built Fort Hills Park around that kind of concept. Today, bald eagles circle the site. That was important to me because I've been dealing with something that was very important to me, and it circled our site for about two minutes. There are not too many places in an urban area where bald eagles come in. The muskrat, the otter colonies, nine of which are there, four muskrat colonies, at least 30 beavers, they depend upon the diversity that some had called a poor repairing corridor. It's actually a very good repairing corridor, it just isn't very big. Mark Hatfield bought his final retirement home overlooking Roth Island, Atwater, a land new development in the Oregon Health Science University South redevelopment area, overlooks Roth Island. It is a very narrow corridor, only 50 to 100 feet in width in many cases, of what used to be a 400-acre island, most of it's gone, but those people bought, the animals still live there. When you have a compressed environment with a lot, without a lot of size, the animals use what's left. The cove is still a delicate place, and I believe these folks will be able to handle it correctly if we encourage some use of the material if it has to be taken down, and some placement of the material, both in the cove and standing habitat elements. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Jerry. Appreciate you coming. Okay, Steve Van Haverbeek, please.
Steve Van Haverbeek, I live in Oregon City. I'm the chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association. The Park Place Neighborhood met to discuss the cove, and we met with the representatives of the developer to discuss our questions and issues with the whole concept. Based on those, the question-and-answer period, we were primarily relieved to know that, yes, all of our issues were addressed, with the exception of the traffic impacts, which, based on tonight's discussion, are still ongoing. The other one that might be still an issue is the air quality within the cove itself if motorized vehicles are allowed into that area because it's now a contained space, so there's, there still may not be a way for motorboats to adequately be ventilated. Other than that, the water quality issues were addressed. We like that there's going to be some use made of this area that's a gateway into our city, and we look forward to having this in our neighborhood.
Great. Thanks very much, Steve. Larry Baker.
I'm a business owner here in Oregon City. I've been here for a little over two years and employ about 20 people. We're excited about this project. Oregon City has a valuable piece of property on the river. I've been around a lot of development projects, and I've watched this as it's emerged, and it appears to me that the development will add a lot to our city. More exciting even than that is the fact that we have a medical facility that has an intent to build there, which will pay for all the development of that 72 acres of park area and the green area. It's going to bring employment to Oregon City. If developments like this aren't approved and don't take place, and we don't take advantage of our natural resources that someone in the city had the foresight to purchase over 10 years ago, Kaiser or people like them could just go to West Lynn or somewhere else where they would be more welcome. And I think that Oregon City has an opportunity now to approve a project that'll not only bring employment, but it'll bring some new living facilities that will enhance the area, something that's unique and can't be duplicated anywhere else in Oregon City that I know of, anyway. So I'm very much in favor of it, and really appreciate the fact that this is a well-thought-out project, and hopefully, the traffic issues and some of those things can be solved along with maybe some of the other developments that the city is looking at as well, to build Oregon City up and to become what it really wants to become. So, thank you.
Great. You bet. Thank you very much. Mike Schnell.
Yeah. Hello. Yeah, I'm Mike Schnell. I'm from Oregon City, and I've been here tonight. I'm speaking kind of on the behalf of the Oregon Bass and Pine Fish Club. The area is a recreation area for me. Lately, the last few years, haven't been able to get in there during the summer, though, so, but anyway, we do a lot of fishing, and if, when you're pulling out the steel structures that are on one side down there, they are habitat for fish and stuff like that, and so what I've come here to do is to, you know, volunteer. You know, our club, we have 350 members plus and quite a few boats, and we've done a lot of habitat restoration with ODFW. You know, like at Hag Lake, we've put in, well, there we bought Berkeley habitats that you can buy, and I think actually the ODFW has a lot of them on hand, but then what I like to use is natural, you know, because you'll be taking down trees, and maybe you'll have big stumps or something like that that you can use as habitat in there. There is a lot, that's used, basically, that area is a salmon smolt area. When they're coming downstream, they rest in that area, and also out in Cedar Oak Island area off the West Lynn side, where there's a lot of small salmon smolts in there when they're migrating down, they rest up, and then they go out. And then also, it's an area where there's pens that are set up down by the sheriffs area there, and they reach Steelhead, and then they release from there, migrate downstream from there. And so with that, I'm just, you know, offering our club, you know, if we can help in any mitigation, and I, I'm in favor of the project. I've lived in Oregon City a long time, and I think it's, it's going to be a good use of the area down there. It's not, it doesn't look too good now, but I think it even may enhance by building that, it may help, maybe it'll enhance the Oregon City Shopping Center. You know, that can be built up a little bit better, too, and stuff like that. With that, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for volunteering your group. I'm sure they'll love it. So what you're telling me is you're going to put more stuff in the water for me to hook my hooks on?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Just so I'm clear. All right. Next, Ed Wagner. And I should say that this is actually you, Martin, neither. It's important. Thank you.
My name is Ed Wagner. I reside in Lake Oswego. This is actually the second half of a presentation that you will receive from Christine Kozinski, who was concerned that she would run out of her three minutes. So we are, have a, first of all, we want to say that we have the highest regard for the work that's been accomplished and find that this is an extremely attractive project. Our concern is for the public safety and the long-term economic sustainability and viability of Oregon City and its impact area. Therefore, we request that the city obtain second, independent, and professional opinions regarding every aspect of the cove development to include complete environmental concerns such as salmon habitat, all issues related to floodplain, earthquake, slides, tree issues, concerns about buffers to the treatment plant, contamination issues, soil and erosion control, as well as all other concerns surrounding the development of this area. We also request that the city add as economic consultants, independent economic consultants, Charles Stevens with Adjutant Consultants, and Joe Courtwright, who's already made a presentation to the city council in retreat, and for soil and geological concerns, the talents of Scott Burns with PSU. These would be independent, arms-length opinions, serving the interests of the citizens of the area and not representing any special interests of any kind. I have no contractual relationships or business with any of the people that I've mentioned. We also applaud the concerns regarding the historical integrity of the physical structures, and we would strongly suggest that the services of How IAT with IAT and FAR be considered in representing the interests of the city of Portland in this matter. I'm also asking that the city be accountable and answer questions and concerns about the sales price of the remainder parcel or the old gravel pit area. It's our understanding that the city purchased this land or will purchase the land for a price that was never negotiated, nor was there ever an independent appraisal done on the value of this land. The city owes an explanation to their voters, and the city must be accountable for this land acquisition. This issue deserves full and complete transparency in determining the real, real market value, especially given the recent drop in land values and the significant cost of cleanup in determining the actual final purchase price. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Kathy Hogan, and she had to leave. Okay. Christine Kozinski, and you have marked neither on this as well. An email dated January 26, 2009 will be entered as Exhibit K.
Before I start my presentation, Kami Keho apologizes for not being here tonight. She has one question for Nancy. She wonders if the DEQ well logs got entered into the records. This goes back to the emails that you have exchanged.
Um, let's see, I'll have to find out, and I guess I'd need clarification as to which well logs.
So I will have to contact you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Christine Kozinski, unincorporated Clackamas County. There are six agencies who have jurisdiction over the cove lands. I am requesting that it be written into the record that the six agencies be contacted and involved in all decisions regarding development of this entire area, and that no development can take place until all six agencies sign off on the project. The six agencies are NOAA Fisheries, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, the DEQ, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, State Lands Division, and the Army Corps of Engineers. Both the cove and the treatment plan are in a bright red earthquake zone, in a floodplain and a slide area. I am requesting again that it be written into the record, into the codes and ordinances that the city apply Oregon State Goal 7, which I will give you a copy of tonight. Oregon State Goal 7 is to protect people and property from natural hazards such as those of floods, landslides, and earthquakes. I note that the treatment plant buildings have been retrofitted for earthquakes. The entire plant has met the guidelines of the National Building Code's process, and in fact, the treatment plant has gone way above the national guidelines by applying much higher standards. They have performed extensive soil studies, floodplain studies, they have paid attention to concerns of lateral spreading and protections of the facility from uplift, and I would suggest that the city study the soil studies and the floodplain studies. Ted Kyle of Wes has previously asked for a 500-foot buffer. Ted Kyle of West has previously asked for a 500-foot buffer between the treatment plant and the condos planned for Cove. The city must clarify this buffer, as it currently is not 500 feet as requested. The 500-foot buffer would be helpful for odor control from the plants. Currently, the buffer is the open land between the treatment plant and the Cove. To achieve the 500-foot requested buffer, the Cove plans would need to change, leaving off the last condo building. If this is not done, there will be more complaints from the citizens living in the Cove, which would force West to apply very expensive and extensive odor controls. These expenses will be huge, and future development will continue to put pressures on the treatment plant for odor control, thus continuing outlays of monies will be necessary. Who will pay for the future costs for odor control and contamination? Will it be the citizens? This developer has built other projects like this next to a treatment plant, but none with this small of a buffer. I'm requesting that the records be kept open on four points. The first point is Goal 7. The city is currently noncompliant and in violation because Goal 7 requirements are not being met. Number two, I'm requesting additional time until the six agencies which I have testified to can legally oversee the Cove and contacted and involved in all decisions prior to any approval. Third, West has performed extensive soil studies. These should be studied and made part of the record and compared with the current records that the city has. The fourth and last concern is that of traffic. It was stated tonight that, I believe it was somewhere on Washington Street, I didn't get the exact intersection, there would be only 20 cars. There's an IT formula that the Oregon City, or the city of Oregon City is following in their road maintenance speed. I believe it's 6.87 ADTs per day from a condo. If you take 6.87 ADTs per day times 224 condos, you come to 2,000, over 2,000 ADTs per day just from the condos. I feel if those ADTs are applicable to the condo owners paying that, it should also be applicable to the ADTs coming in and out of the Cove. And when you take the cars coming in and out of the medical facility, yes, there are 400 spaces. Some of them will be for employees, some will be for vans. But say you might have 200 spaces left for patients. Patients come and go every hour or two, so you're going to have 200 spaces filled, then 200 spaces filled, then 200 spaces filled. So, now, how much traffic are we really looking at in coming out of the Cove? And I would like those studies to be done before any approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
We'll enter in ordinance number 01-1033, adoption of the Oregon City Waterfront Master Plan in schools and urban renewal money lost forever as Exhibit L.
Thank you. I'm Paul Edgar, Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. Back in 2001, Oregon City went through an extensive and long-term water, city waterfront master plan study. It's a beautiful study. If you've not seen it, you should get it. It's available. I had Nancy Ide email me a copy, and I'll make sure that it gets emailed back. It's a record. It was passed as an ordinance, and within it, it spells out a plan completely different than what this plan is. It was what was adapted and passed by the city commission, completely different than what this plan is. I would venture to say that if, in fact, we are now all of a sudden changing all the rules that have been passed and are codified by city code, we should be thinking again. We should be taking a look at this codified plan and trying to identify it. We cannot be closing this and voting on this until we identify what all of this is about. But more importantly to you guys and to you gentlemen, I would like to come back and say, do any of you guys hold dear to any of, about our schools? I think we all do. We know Oregon City School District is forcing a shortfall right now that's larger than we've ever experienced, ever. Approximately $500,000 every year comes out of urban renewal money that should have gone to the Oregon City School District. Therefore, when we start taking money from, using TIF, urban renewal, that could be going to our kids, we have to use an extremely high standard. It's also taking money away from police, public safety, fire, from Clackamas Community College, from the next generation. So, all I'm asking for is, is when we see all of these outstanding issues, we have to raise the bar. We have to raise this bar because it's between us and our future, our children, a properly educated next generation, good police and fire protection. Because as you take 10 million bucks, and now maybe another 120 million or 1,000, and it goes on and on. And in fact, we pay $1.3 million for the Glacier property, and we turn it over, they make their improvements, and they sell it for 7.5 million. We put our venture money, our urban renewal, my tax dollars, my, the money that could be going to funding good schools. We take that money and we put it there, we give it to them, and we still have the debt. We, it's still, we still owe that money. They make the money, we give it to the developer, they make the money, we take it from the kids, we can't even have schools and teachers. We're going to close Park Place School, maybe, probably, because the school doesn't have the, the school district doesn't have any money. We have to be so damn prudent about the use of urban renewal money and the criteria that we use for any funds that are invested. This is a whole new standard when we start talking about taking money away from the kids' mouths. And all I assure you is, is with all of these issues, I, can you tell me for sure that we can get an approval to dredge the Clackamas River out, the Cove mouth and down? Because the gravel's going to come down every five years and fill it up. Who's going to pay for this? Right now, the water in the Cove is virtually dead because the gravel bar is so large except for, except for right now when we have high water. But six months of the year or better, the water's basically killed. And so, we've got issues. We don't know whether we can go out there and dredge that. You know, as Christine said, do we know that the fishery people are going to sign off dredging that whole thing out? I don't think, if that isn't a contingency, if that isn't a high-bar level, because we're, the plan says we're going to make this an aquatic center. Well, how in the hell do we make it an aquatic center when we can't run a boat in and out when the water's dead? And if we can't identify these things, those are outstanding and critical issues that have not yet been addressed. We are not prepared to make a decision. This has to be continued over until we can get all of these, if, all of this information out on top of the table. There are no issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And last, Adam Mater, and this is in support.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Adam Mater.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. I'm from Kaiser Permanente's Real Estate Department. My office is in Portland, Oregon. I live in Beaverton. As you are aware, Kaiser Permanente is currently in a purchase and sale contract for approximately 9.3 acres of the Cove master plan development. Our own due diligence investigations and feasibility studies of the property are still ongoing, so I cannot speak tonight in detail of our plans for the site. But there are a few items I would like to address as part of the Cove CDP hearing because of their direct influence over Kaiser Permanente's ability to construct and operate a medical office building to the standards our members come to expect from their health care provider. A growing number of residents in and around Oregon City are members of Kaiser Permanente. To provide our members with good access to health care, it is important for Kaiser Permanente to secure a site with sufficient infrastructure and adequate access, including parking. Kaiser Permanente chose to negotiate for land located in the Cove development because of what the property and area will be upon completion of the first two phases of the CDP. The completion of the infrastructure and open space improvements are cornered to our decision to acquire and operate on the property, as is adequate access. You've heard evidence and opinions in favor of a 5 per 1,000 parking ratio, and Kaiser is in strong support of this. We would like to see alternative transportation options. We like what it means for our members. We like what it means for our employees. Kaiser has a history of supporting such options through transit management programs at other facilities that we have. At this point, though, alternative options are currently limited at the site, namely carpooling stalls, designations. But parking ratios less than 5 per 1,000 in the current traffic and mass transit systems and Kaiser Permane-- forgive me. But any parking ratio less than 5 per 1,000 in the current traffic and mass transit system and Kaiser Permanente would be compromising its quality of care to its members, which it cannot do. Again, Kaiser's in support of a 5 per 1,000 parking ratio over at the medical facility site. Also, as part of our ease of access, we consider important for our members that we do not have to manage negotiating through potential traffic for obvious safety reasons. The first condition of the staff report expressed to have a right-of-way dedication across the property we are considering to acquire for the purposes of a street connection. Kaiser Permanente sees this as a safety issue. I strongly request that the first condition of the CDP be readdressed during Kaiser Permanente's GDP, if at all. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Okay, I have no more requests. Is there anyone in the audience that I missed that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. So--
Applicant's rebuttal.
Going to do that next. And that was my question, what time we got here? Close to 11 o'clock. So, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut now.
Do we have five minutes to prepare?
Sure. You're, absolutely. See you tomorrow. We'll take a recess for five minutes.
Thank you. I really meant to do that.
--are worthy of some rebuttal, so I wanted to offer that for you. Agency identified really three areas of concern, and so, they are the Agnes reconstruction is one. The second is the 205-213 interchange, and the third is the 9090 corridor in front of the shopping center. So, starting first with Agnes, and we're pulling up an aerial here so I can speak to a picture here. Sorry. I tend to like to go and point to things, so I wish I could take a microphone with me.
We have the technology to point.
But this shows how shaky my hands are. The key is this. Before, we had to close Agnes because of its roadway conditions. These properties all had two points of access to the transportation system. They had what we have today, which is Washington to the 213 interchange, but they had also Agnes connecting to Main Street. But we had to take that away from them and for an indeterminate period of time, but not permanently. That wasn't the city's intent. Thus, the city in its TSP requires Agnes to be built to a city collector standard at some point in the future, and here's the future in terms of this development. So, you would be replacing what was, what existed before. The beauty of what existed before was the fact that those businesses and residents in that area had access to the local transportation system without having to get on a state highway or an interstate freeway. They don't have that option today. So, the proposal, which is fundamentally to comply to your conditions, which is to build the TSP collector to your standard, intuitively makes sense. Not only is it good for those land uses that exist today, not only would it be good for the Cove in the future, but equally important, in my opinion, is that it's good for the entire system because it allows, for example, in the weekday PM peak hour, the 20 vehicles that want to come south to this point and then continue south, they don't have to do that. They do it today because they're forced to do it. In the future, they'd have an option. In the traffic study when we prepared it, we didn't assume that anyone would reroute their trip. We simply left them there. That's the worst case, that people continue to do what they did in the past. But for anyone who's done that movement at 5:00 PM, they know that if there was any other option, frankly, they'd seriously consider it. So, I think that on the whole, there's a tremendous benefit to the system for this kind of a connection to occur where, at least in what we call the southbound direction, we have that one-way traffic connection from this area via Agnes to Main Street, and that it benefits not just the local system, but it benefits the state highway system as well, both for operations as well as safety, which is a concern that ODOT was expressing. So, that's point number one with regard to what the Agnes connection can do for the system today. ODOT raised two other concerns here at this interchange. One is this left-turn movement, which is a stop-controlled left-turn that would want to go to the north here. Well, the traffic study counted and found less than five vehicles that want to make that movement in the weekday PM peak hour. That doesn't surprise me because it's these existing land uses, and these people know this interchange extraordinarily well. And if there were some other way to make that movement, they'd be making it. This is their one and only way. What we're offering them in the future with the Agnes connection is an alternative. We would have to allow two-way traffic on Agnes, but at least they would have that option if you were, at some point in the future, able to grant that to them. And then, lastly, the concern is, again, kind of restating, these 20 vehicles that come to a stop sign here and then want to continue through, and they're having to merge with all of this loop ramp off, coming off of 205. And again, as I said, they have an option once Agnes is connected, if you go through with that recommendation. Well, that's the north end of the interchange, and although we don't have a picture, I think you can pretty well imagine, at the northbound ramp terminal, which is just starting to come into view here, the one and only movement of concern there is, magic. Thank you. It's this left-turn, which again is at a stop sign, and we want to go left and go north to long-bolled the same destination. So, if they have an alternative, they'd certainly be pleased to use it. But again, it's only five movements in the weekday PM peak hour, and we don't expect the Cove development to cause traffic to use those movements. And I want to stop for a moment and explain why. So, let's think about the users of the Cove. Number one, you've got residential. Those people know the area. They live there. They know how to get there and how to get out of there. And if there's-- And if there's an option to not use this interchange during the peak periods, the AM and the PM, they won't be using it. So they'll be going on their routes, taking Main Street into downtown and connecting to McLaughlin, or going to their destinations in some other manner. And again, because with Agnes constructed, some of these movements now don't even have to be in these places, they've got alternative access. So we're offering alternatives, which is very good. And under normal circumstances, I would submit to you, ODOT would even be saying, boy, it's a good thing that the local system improves its connectivity to relieve the state system. And that's ultimately what you're achieving here. So that's all of the points with regard to Agnes, and frankly, by extension, the 213-205 interchange. So let's miraculously fly to Oregon 99E real quickly. ODOT again raises primarily safety issues. And in all cases, with all of their safety issues, they acknowledge to you that these are existing conditions. In fact, that was kind of an opening remark of Ms. Chris. What we have here is, again, what we call the Firestone Drive intersection, and we have 170 vehicles that make that southbound left turn movement in the weekday PM peak hour. It's not legal, but they make it. Now, over a five-year period, we studied the crash history at that intersection. We discovered after some pretty thorough searching, three crashes that can be associated with that intersection. And what we learned is, when you look at that crash rate over the millions of vehicles that use that intersection over a five-year period, the crash ratio is 0.04 per million entering vehicles. That's a very, very low crash ratio by virtually any standard. So we're not seeing the safety concern that ODOT has being revealed in the crash history at this intersection. But be that as it may, again, it is an illegal movement, and so ODOT could, at its discretion at any time, come and build a raised median on 99 and prevent that movement from being made. We studied that condition. We assumed that the driveway was closed and only worked as a right-in, right-out intersection, and that all of that existing traffic that wants to make that southbound left came and made their movement here, and all of the site-generated traffic that we had assigned to that, in fact, came down and made a right at Dunes and accessed via the Dunes-Clackamas Drive connection. And what we found is that the Dunes-99E intersection operates acceptably, both by your standard and by ODOT's standard. So even if ODOT were to implement that median closure, we'd find that the system would still work with the site fully built out. As we move south along the corridor, the last piece that I'll speak to is this segment between Dunes Drive and the southbound ramp terminal. And again, the overriding concern is that this queuing area for what is a southbound left turn to the On ramp isn't adequate. And again, ODOT acknowledged that to you this evening. It's not long enough today, and it won't be long enough in the future. And so, the idea is to essentially lengthen the storage for that southbound left turn movement. It's a practical solution. Its implementation, the method of implementation, is being debated, partly between city staff and between ODOT. What's the right way to fix it? So rather than trying to be Solomon and figure out who's right, what I fundamentally would offer you is a methodology for calculating proportionate fair share. And this will take me a few minutes to explain, and I beg your indulgence with me, but I'll try and be brief and succinct. At an intersection, there are certain movements that we call critical movements. They're really the movements that dictate the important demand, that take up all of the green time at the signal and tell you whether or not the intersection works or fails. And in this case, at this intersection, as an example, the critical movements are the southbound left, the northbound through, and the third movement is this, I'll call it westbound left. Those are the three critical movements. All the other movements, they have more capacity than they know what to do with. So it's those three that are our challenge. And so, my suggested proportional fair share is essentially to look at those three movements, add them up under the total condition estimated in the traffic study, which is year 2012 with the site completely built out and background growth occurring. That would be my total volume. And then I would look at, for those critical movements, the volume that the site is adding. So anytime I'm adding to a critical movement, I'm counting that trip. And I take those trips, the site adds to those critical movements, divided by the sum of those critical movements, and that's my proportional fair share. So before I go further, did I describe that well enough for it to make sense? Great, okay. So having taken the time to run those calculations and using the information that ODOT provided, if you want to make some quick notes, what I found is the punchline, the total, would be $29,000. And that addresses the three improvements that ODOT laid out for you at 99. And so, our suggestion, now speaking on behalf of the applicant, our suggestion is that we would welcome a condition by the commission that required a payment of $29,000 as a proportionate fair share contribution to improvements to the 99E corridor in the area between the Clackamas River Bridge and the I-205 northbound ramp terminal to address the issues raised as concerns by ODOT. Thank you. Oh, pardon me. And we would ask that the timing of that be tied to the issuance of a building permit for the residential development, the first building permit?
It's, uh, B, phase four.
Phase four.
Yeah. So, do you guys have any questions for Phil before I just do a kind of a final summary? So, Phil, look, we appreciate your time. We appreciate your effort towards reviewing the project. We think we pulled together a very detailed response to the city's master planning provisions. We think we've anticipated and addressed the concerns that are inherent in the site, and we'd request that you close the public hearing this evening and deliberate an issue of decision.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for following up on everything. Appreciate it. So Commissioner Stein?
Oh, I was tired.
I sensed that a little bit.
No, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to suggest that the hour is late. Was wondering from staff, what would be the date of our next Planning Commission hearing?
The second, Monday in February, is February 9th, and then the fourth would be February 23rd.
So the suggestion, I guess that I'd offer, would be to discuss this then, as opposed to discussing it now and coming to a decision. But would that be something we'd want to...
Well, the question is, do you want to close the public hearing at this point?
I would move to keep the record open for seven days and to continue the public hearing on February 9th.
To get -- okay, so you'd like to keep the public hearing, you'd like to keep the...
Keep the record open.
For seven days.
For seven days.
And then we would continue our deliberations and any responses from staff, which is acceptable, if I understand right.
We actually had a -- I know I spoke with you briefly during the break about this and thought through a little bit more, and we had indicated the idea of, you know, the question for you is whether you feel you have the evidence that you need to make your decision. To the extent you feel that you don't, we had discussed leaving the record open for seven days, but as we thought through, if there is new evidence introduced, there's an obligation to provide a chance for rebuttal. And so, if it's seven days, and then seven days, and you're getting, you know, the evidence the day of the hearing, potentially getting rebuttal evidence. Because this is not the initial evidentiary hearing, you had a hearing back in December, you don't have any obligation to keep the record open if you don't want to. To the extent you do want to provide the potential for additional evidence, I was discussing with Mr. Drenlaw the idea of leaving the record open for five days, basically till the end of this week, and then providing seven days after that for rebuttal evidence. And then, you know, we'd have all the evidence by Friday and could get that to you, so you'd have it over the weekend to look at instead of it coming in the very last day. That's if, in fact, you do want to keep the record open. I heard Commissioner Stein mention continuing the public hearing. That certainly is an option, but that would allow people to come and testify, and I...
I misspoke when I said that.
Okay. And that's what I thought. I would assume that you wanted to close the public hearing, keep the record open, and basically begin deliberations come next Monday. At that time, deliberations can include discussions with staff. Those are not considered ex parte context. And so, you know, that would be a way that makes most sense. So let me to kind of reiterate what staff would suggest. If you want to keep the record open, five days for new evidence, seven days for rebuttal evidence, and then deliberations at your next meeting.
So moved.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Tony, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner LeJua.
Aye.
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Okay. So we are -- the next hearing will be Monday, February 9th, 7 o'clock.
Great. And we appreciate it. Thank you all for staying as late as you have. Sorry it's just too late for us to get -- go through all this tonight to be able to come up with an answer. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else for the Planning Commission? Tony?
I don't have any additional news.
Okay. Then if that's the case, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.